English class, four days a week. I know that learning English will be so beneficial to me because I can have better communication with my community, get better jobs, and I can help my children with homework. Thanks, Petaluma Dull School, for the help and opportunity. And to the Petaluma School Board, I would like to say thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Daisy.
Thank you, LeBlanc.
Yes, and next we have Pun Fowler. Okay, so Pun, you'll turn on your video.
Okay, Kimribsua. Yeah. Hello, good evening, everybody. And my name is Pun Po Fowler. I am a former teacher from Cambodia and a new US citizen and AESL student at Petaluma Adult School. I enjoy school very much. I am talking. I am learning a new language. It's helped when I am talking with my American husband. It's also helped me understand a new culture, what is different in my culture. And I am able to appreciate my new country. Last year, I became a US citizen and voted for the first time. I also got my driver permit. In the future, I want to go to college and pass my driving test. I would like to ask you to please continue supporting adult education. It keeps your brain healthy and helps you open your mind. Adult education is important because it's never too late to learn. I thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you, Pun.
Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Vera Gomez.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Vera Gomez. I'm from Brazil. I'm a wife, mother, grandmother, and friend. I represent all immigrants who left behind all of the goals they achieved to have a new and fresh start. My biggest challenge is to overcome the language barrier. My greatest achievement, I become an American citizen. For the future, my most important goal is to learn English. I try. I would like to remind you of the importance of Petaluma Edu School for us immigrants. When coming to foreign countries in search of new opportunities, we cannot imagine the difficulties we will face. Our luck is that we can count on the support of Petaluma, the people of Petaluma Edu School, who care for us and they give us knowledge. And it's essential that help provided by adult education. Without this help, which includes in addition to education care for our children and grandchildren. I need to say thank you for Petaluma City School Board for education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
All right, and we have one final speaker tonight, and that's Lucia Arango.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I am Lucia Arango. I am Mexican, a mother, a wife, and a daughter. My challenge is raising my children in different culture. My biggest achievement is coming to the US. Opportunities for my family. Right now, my oldest daughter is about to graduate from UC Davis. My goals for the future are finishing my GED, improve my English, and making sure my other children go to college. I represent all immigrant mothers who have big dreams for their children. To the Petaluma City School Board, I would like to say that it is great that you support immigrants and provide childcare. Petaluma Dull School is very important because it is helping improve our lives and the lives of our families. Thank you for everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lucia.
Great stories. That was wonderful.
All right, well, thank you again for having us. I am so proud of these students, again, who all volunteered. If you can imagine going to another country and having to do a speech in a different language when you've only lived there for a few years, it's a really big deal. And so, they did an amazing job.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for having us. Good night.
Good night. That was amazing. Okay, our next present report is Petaluma City Schools' environmental literacy efforts.
Hi there. We have a slideshow, so we're just waiting for that to come up.
Oh, cool.
Ah ha.
All right. So Babz Kavanaugh is going to start us off. Babz, are you there?
I can't. I'm muted.
You're muted, but I just heard you.
Yeah, me too. Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yeah, you did.
All right, wonderful. All right, well, thank you. Thanks so much for unmuting me, for one. And also for letting us do this presentation tonight. We're just so thrilled that we're having this opportunity to be able to talk to you about our programs. So my name is Babz Kavanaugh, and I'm a longtime Petaluma resident whose four adult children all attended the Petaluma Schools. For over 25 years, I've been working and consulting in community-based healthcare services and public education. And today, I'm here as Chair of Friends of the Petaluma River. I want to share my passion for environmental education. We live in a wonderful place, as you all know, a community rich in natural resources with our very own river and creeks threading throughout our town. So we're really interested in just talking to you about our program. I've attended all of the district's LCAP engagement meetings in 2019-20. And I appreciate that the goals in the LCAP plan are data-driven and that social-emotional learning and math are priority focuses of the LCAP. We're here today to advocate for teaching our children to be stewards of their natural environment. And I hope tonight, we can provide rationale and offer our local resources to support environmental literacy as a core component of our district goals. So I'm honored to be in the company of Kirsten Franklin and Stephanie Bastianon, and I'm now going to turn it all over to them. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Babz. All right, we can switch the slide. Thank you. All right, good evening. I'm Kirsten Franklin. I've been a teacher in the Petaluma City Schools since 1989. And from 2013 to 2016, I was a TOSA, or Teacher on Special Assignment for Science and Common Core Support. I'm currently teaching 4th grade at McNear School. And tonight, I want to share a brief history of our district's development of science and environmental literacy instruction. And then I'll pass it over to Stephanie Bastianon from Friends of the Petaluma River, who's going to talk about their partnership that PCS has had with the Watershed Classroom for several years now and their plans to expand their support to teachers and students. So from 2008 to 2015, our district participated in a program from the Lawrence Hall of Science called ASI. So you can see that picture on the left there. There were cohorts of elementary teachers who had the opportunity to go through some training and learn about science inquiry and quality science instruction. And they were also trained in the Next Generation Science Standards. This is all out of the Lawrence Hall of Science. ASI also sponsored the science half of my position as a TOSA. So that half was as a science coordinator for the district. So during that time that I was TOSA, around 2015, Superintendent of Education Tom Torleksen, he issued the Blueprint for Environmental Literacy that calls for schools to integrate environmental literacy across the grades so that all California students graduate from high school environmentally literate. So those two pictures in the center of the slider, what I'm talking about right now. And an important action that's advocated in the blueprint is for school districts to establish strong partnerships with environmental education providers who can also help plan. They provide resources, and they can help implement these activities. So during that same time, to learn more about these directives, when I was TOSA, I began attending meetings with the Sonoma Environmental Education Collaborative, also known as SEEK. And that's on the far right of this slide. They're a collection of Sonoma County environmental education providers who network to create programs connecting teachers and students and communities to our local environment. And SEEK at the time was working with an organization called Change Scale that provided professional development to them about the next-gen science standards as well as best practices for teaching outdoors. Change Scale later ran a pilot program supporting school districts to create K-12 environmental literacy continuums. And our district worked with them in a team of teachers and admin and EE providers. And what we did was we studied what was going on in the district at the time in terms of environmental literacy. And we also offered professional learning opportunities on proven environmental literacy practices. So that work has since passed on to the Lawrence Hall of Science. And they've recently connected with our district to discuss how Petaluma City Schools might once again move forward in its work to provide environmental literacy instruction to all PCS students. At some point, at your convenience, if you click on that picture of the Venn diagram at the far right bottom, you can read a draft of the environmental literacy framework that we were working on at the time. It's got a vision and an action plan. So though there was a gap as the work transitioned to Lawrence Hall of Science, environmental literacy, I think, continues to have a presence in our district. In 2018, the school board adopted the Climate Action Resolution, advocating that all PCS students graduate as knowledgeable and informed decision-makers regarding the natural environment. And then recently, the District Science Adoption Committee that selected our new K-5 and 6A science curriculum, required that any science programs considered must have a strong environmental literacy component as well as opportunities for the students to learn outside. So as you can see, the development of environmental literacy in our district has been ongoing for several years. Though it's not been at the forefront recently, I can assure you that many teachers are still passionate about embedding it in their own instruction and in the experiences that they provide for students, especially now as we experience the effects of climate change and a global pandemic. This is a good time to address how the collaborative partnerships of our district and our local environmental education providers can empower our students with the knowledge that they need to navigate this changing world. So I turn it over now to Stephanie, who will expand on the partnership that our district has had with the Watershed Classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. You can change it to the next slide. And the next one. Okay. Hi, everybody. My name's Stephanie Bastianon. I'm the Executive Director at Friends of the Petaluma River and one of the founders of the Watershed Classroom Program. I just want to take a couple minutes to tell you guys about the program and then go into kind of where we are hoping to move into. The program was created in 2012 through funding from the Sonoma County Water Agency and from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, along with support from Petaluma City Schools. Our mission is to support exceptionally engaging curriculum about the Petaluma River and watershed in order to educate youth in Petaluma about their place in our environment, how their decisions and actions affect their environment, and how can inspire conservation and celebration of the Petaluma watershed. We are guided by the principle that educators are our community's most important resource. Teachers guide future generations of Petalumans whose decisions will determine the health and vitality of our wetlands and other natural resources. Here's some pictures of our students out at work. You can click to the next slide. I'm not going to go too much into this, but this is kind of what we offer as part of participating in the program, a lot of resources and support. Want to, I don't know if this will be available for folks afterwards, but I'm going to go to the next slide and continue forward. Over the last seven years of program implementation, we've had projects in every grade level from 1st through 12th grade. Eighty-eight teachers participating from 13 different schools with almost 6,000 students learning about the Petaluma watershed through outdoor hands-on education. In that time, educators have reported that their students were more engaged and retained knowledge better during their watershed classroom curriculum. Next slide, please. Time and again, studies have shown that students who learn outdoors develop greater independence, confidence, creativity, decision-making, and problem-solving skills, empathy towards others, motor skills, self-discipline, and initiative. Just to name a few things. We believe that now more than ever, it is important to support youth in a deep connection to place. Currently, we are developing grade-specific curriculum based on the Petaluma watershed using TWIG science and hope to create a pilot program to bring Watershed Classroom to all 1st and 4th grade students in the next school year. Through this concerted effort, we can help our students understand their local environment and how they're interconnected to it, develop real-world skills, and emphasize the importance of taking care of the natural world at a time when we are facing unprecedented changes and upheavals. So we're asking members of the board tonight to support this sort of pilot program in a partnership with the district and Friends of the Petaluma River moving forward. Hand it back over to you, Kirsten.
It sounds like she's muted.
I should know better by now, sorry. We just want to ask, we have a video, a quick video. It's five minutes. And it's an example of a project, a classroom, 4th grades at McNear School. Done a lot of collaboration with Watershed Classroom. These are students who have been doing bio blitzes. They've been taking surveys of the wildlife on campus and using that information to determine how to create wildlife habitat. This is also a capstone project that I did to become a National Geographic Certified Educator. So if it's okay, we'll play that for you. But I think it's a good example of what can happen when classrooms are working closely with their environmental ed providers. Thanks. I just need to do one thing. I went into it a little bit wrong. One second. Okay.
Lost the video.
Okay, almost there. There we go. What you guys can hear. It all started with a trip one summer to the Peruvian Amazon to participate in a science-based K-12 professional development program. There, while immersed in inquiry and scientific investigation, I kept thinking to myself, how do I bring this kind of experience back to my students? How do I get them outside to investigate and learn more about their own local environment? My name is Kirsten Franklin, and I'm a 4th grade teacher in Petaluma, California. This is my capstone project for the National Geographic Educator Certification Program. Get Outside is the theme of this project, with a focus on how conducting bio blitzes helped my students learn more about the natural environment right outside our classroom door. Several kinds of preparations needed to happen first before doing a bio blitz. The students went outside often to record their observations of the natural environment around the schoolyard. They went on field trips to explore other local and regional park environments. They used National Geographic materials to study the biodiversity in the Amazon watershed. And Kate Marionchild, author of Secrets of the Oak Woodlands, told them fascinating stories about local plants and animals. Use of the National Geographic Bio Blitz resources, Imani's Bio Blitz and the Bio Blitz Pocket Guide, addressed some of the goals of the National Geographic Learning Framework. Connections were made between the human and natural worlds through grounding the students in the importance of biodiversity, understanding that the ornithologist and the environmental educator who help us collect data are models for real-world jobs, the economic perspective, and realizing how the data collected can provide information for supporting biodiversity on our campus. The students then reviewed the data from previous bio blitzes to make predictions about the species they thought they might find again. These predictions yielded numerous questions with different ecological perspectives. How would the winter bio blitz differ from the fall session? What kinds of changes might we see? Would we see more or fewer birds, insects, animals, and plants? It was finally time for the actual bio blitz. Three adult facilitators each led rotating groups of students throughout the day. A local ornithologist to identify birds, an environmental education provider to identify plant species, and myself, who led the insect group. Data was recorded by both students and the facilitators that included the date, time, location, weather, and temperature for each rotation and the names of the species located. When possible, species were photographed with an iPad by one designated student in each group. Throughout the bio blitz, students used tools such as beach sheets to tap bugs out of bushes and trees, bug box viewers, and binoculars. The bio blitz had several applications to the National Geographic Scales and Perspectives Continuum. While examining the local environment, global connections were made. For example, in the plant rotations, students identified native oaks and non-native English ivy plants. This stimulated discussions about the pros and cons of both types of plants, raised questions about where the English ivy came from and why it was chosen to plant there in the first place. Another example was when the ornithologists taught the students which birds were local and which birds were migrants from other regional or global locations. At the final debrief of the day, the students compared and contrasted the data from a previous bio blitz done in the fall. Students noticed that there were fewer birds than in the fall, but that bigger flocks of certain birds, like robins, were seen. Additionally, students noticed the differences in air temperatures, the amount of water in the creek, and plants that had lost their foliage. Collecting data from our bio blitzes was very important to our work on two habitat projects at our school. Now more knowledgeable about the creek that borders our school, the students understood the purpose of removing the invasive plants and planting natives in their stead. Learning more about the birds that live on and around our campus also provided motivation to design and build a bird habitat behind our classroom. Students even volunteered their time after school to prep the grounds. Doing bio blitzes with my students was worthwhile in so many ways. It got them outside to explore the natural environment on the school campus. And because they conducted bio blitzes like scientists, they obtained real data that motivated and empowered them to work towards creating more wildlife habitat at our school. The collection of data over time through future bio blitzes will also be a very important foundation for our projects and the way in which we measure the successes of our endeavors to promote more biodiversity on our campus. As a result, I feel like the students are so much more connected to their local environment because of these bio blitzes. We are definitely on our way to developing a strong culture of environmental stewardship at our school. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
Can I ask a quick question? How extensively through the district schools you've been able to implement activities like this or educational movements?
The example that you saw is work that we're doing at McNear School. And I believe that many of the other schools have their own projects going in different ways. So you would see similar things happening through the school garden programs and other habitat things. And it's something that we'd like to spread further, for sure. Especially through the Watershed Classroom. Yeah.
So does it build? Like, so you had a fourth, that was a 4th grade class. Does, is the program kind of like building through the grade levels? Or is it just mainly just like grade curriculum that some teachers are doing? So would you like to see it more like throughout each grade level, throughout each school? Is that what you're?
I think that's a really good question. And part of that work that we were doing years ago with trying to develop an environmental literacy continuum, would be the way to try and articulate that. At our site, you know, those kids are going on to 5th and 6th grade, and they are still participating in the STRAW program, the students and teachers restoring a watershed. And we are fortunate that they are helping us restore the part of Thompson Creek that's part of our campus. So there's a continuation happening with the 5th and 6th graders in that program. And when they go back into the creek, they're already really familiar, having been back there, doing bio blitzes. So there's continuation that way.
And I would just add that that's something that we want to work towards. Right now, a lot of our teachers in the Watershed Classroom program are doing projects that kind of speak to them personally. And so there've been a wide range of things and what interests people. But what we would love to work towards is that there is this kind of step-by-step process. So each grade level, you're learning something different. That's, our goal is that every year, kids will be learning something about the watershed at every level. So we're working on it. Right now, we have in the program currently, we have eight different schools participating and they're different grade levels, so they're not necessarily feeding into each other.
So then that would be your, kind of one of your goals with the pilot? Is to do that.
Yes.
So that's the reason for the pilot, basically?
Yeah, to create some uniformity. And also to, you know, we want to create some curriculum that's based on this TWIG science curriculum that's now been adopted so that it really dovetails nicely with what the teachers are doing. Up until now, we've really had our teachers develop their curriculum themselves. And so we want to work hand-in-hand with them to really dive into this new curriculum and find ways at each grade level. So we already work with a couple 1st grade and 4th grade classes, so those seemed like good kind of stepping points to jump in on.
Thank you.
It's awesome. Okay.
Good work. Excellent work. Thanks. Thanks.
I would love to see it in all schools.
I would love it. We'll see.
Okay, moving on, we have TOSA, Presentation on Comprehensive Support and Improvement Work.
I'm just unmuting myself. Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for having us. Good evening, board members, PCS administrators, and public. I'm Leslie Irig. I'm one of three TOSAs working on school improvement in our alternative high schools this year. Let's see, presentation to show. So just waiting for Ashley to pull that up. Great, thank you, Ashley. On behalf of Jamie Bushman and Jana Conley, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our work this evening. We hope you had a chance to preview the student and teacher videos. We realize that we have limited time, so while we'll move quickly through this presentation this evening, we want you to know that the presentation was designed to be used as a storyboard of our work this year, with details and links that you might find useful. We began our work in August with a broad question: How do we improve our alternative high schools? We know that systems are complex and sometimes hard to see. Everyone within a system often just sees that one part of the system, and that part can seem like it's the most compelling. So we realized the importance of putting aside our own assumptions and trusting the improvement science process so that positive change can occur. Adopting the improvement science mindset allowed us to let go of preconceived ideas, including and listening to stakeholders early on reinforced trust through the process. Our CSI team, including Jason Sutter, Cliff DeGraw, and Lindsay Munn, worked together to define our problem, which focused on low graduation rates for Gateway to College and San Antonio High School, and high suspension rates for Carpe Diem High School and Sonoma Mountain High School. Once defined, we worked, we explored the benchmarks provided by the California Dashboard. This snapshot launched our work. Then as a team, we collaborated and developed special, specific learning questions to guide in our data dive. Making predictions allowed us to think more deeply about where we are currently. We used Ares, Illuminate, and other tools to help us with our inquiries and our data We conducted empathy interviews with students in the fall and again in the spring to better understand our system. Our questions were intentionally open-ended so that we could capture the story of our students, their journeys, leading them to alternative education. Students were open and candid, and they shared their narratives and their experiences with We developed a way to codify the narrative based on positive and negative statements students shared. Some themes emerged. Homework and motivation were at the top of their concerns. We captured their stories in a video to share with the sites, and hopefully you'll get a chance to look at those videos, or maybe you already have.
From there, we began our work with each site with a professional development day focused around these norms, which really help to prevent solutionitis, to embrace the definitely incomplete, possibly incorrect outcomes, because it's not about getting it right the first time. This is the not always linear, sometimes uncomfortable, but always enlightening process of improvement science. We used already existing resources from Illuminate and the California Dashboard for the staff to notice and wonder. We also brought in our own data that we felt had some surprising results, such as nearly 70% of students at San Antonio did not attend an elementary school within PCS. And we looked at data to see how credit deficient students were upon entry. A large number of students enter San Antonio their senior year, some with as many as 150 units to complete, some with more. They are at a point where it is mathematically impossible for them to graduate on time. This data proved something to the staff that they had long since felt and believed. We have to get students to transfer earlier and help them to graduate on time. We also brought in the students' perspective about what they want or where they see themselves after high school, and most of the students do have an idea of what they would like to do. The question becomes, how can we help them get there? Basically, our intention at this professional development day was to spend some time understanding the data attributed to the students that the teachers already know so well. And the good news, which is just too good to say for the end of this presentation, is that through the work that the teachers, counselors, and principal, Ms. Lofton, have done this year, San Antonio has a conservative projection of a graduation rate between 70 and 80%.
Wow.
For this full year. And isn't that amazing? That's compared to 52% last year, and this is not due to any graduation requirement change due to COVID-19. And I know we are all like tipping our hats off to them right now. Okay, but circling back around to work from on that professional development day, after looking at all that data, we began our action period using a few different tools. The first tool we used, which aided our root cause analysis, was the fishbone diagram. And here is the fishbone diagram we created for the San Antonio staff. You can see here, there were a number of different categories or causes that the staff felt contributed to their graduation rate, and not all of those are within our area of reach, such as student health, adverse childhood experiences, and socioeconomic status. This step, though, really helped to focus each of us on what we can control, like how we can affect motivation, academics, and staffing, so that we could have the most impact on the graduation rate.
So working with the stakeholders, we began to help each site focus on a theory of change. These change ideas were specific to each site's problem of practice. Then each site identified the specific drivers, what causes the, what causes the problem. We used another CSI tool called the driver diagram, which always reminding us always to go back and think, how can we test it? Knowing that Carpe Diem High School and Sonoma Mountain High School had been identified for high suspension rates, we developed drivers together, and some change ideas emerged. Carpe Diem High School and Sonoma Mountain High School realized that academic engagement, can you go back one? Go back, there you go. Thank you. Carpe Diem High School and Sonoma Mountain High School realized that academic engagement, classroom environment, substance abuse, and social emotional wellness were the primary drivers causing higher suspension rates at that site. Once these primary and secondary drivers were identified, the staff could clearly articulate ideas that would have a higher impact on their students. So now you can change the slide. Thank you. So the lower effort ideas, such as kids, teaching kids about substance abuse, and higher effort ideas, such as enlisting the help of the mentor me diversion program, were discussed and decided. And this is, yeah, we're exactly where we need to be. As we move forward toward implementing change ideas, a PDSA, Plan Do Study Act cycle, was created for each change idea. The purpose of this PDSA cycle is to study and analyze the process, making incremental changes as needed. So some of the outcomes for, for these two schools is that Carpe Diem had a 23.1% suspension rate last year, but they had zero suspensions this year. Sonoma Mountain High School had 21.6% suspension rate last year, and they only had one suspension rate at the start of this year before we really got into this process. I think Jana needs to unmute. There you are. Good, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Gateway, I'm going to speak about Gateway to College. Gateway to College is a unique partnership between Petaluma City School District and the Petaluma Campus of Santa Rosa Junior College. Students come from all over Sonoma County to attend Gateway, where they are co-enrolled in high school and college courses. Students work toward completing their high school requirements while simultaneously working toward a certificate or associate degree. Per their charter, Gateway students are not expected to graduate within the traditional four-year format. So there was initial frustration from Gateway staff that the California State Dashboard does not have a way to measure charter schools differently than traditional high schools. For Gateway staff, what felt like a more accurate reflection of student progress was to monitor students' adherence to their graduation plan. When a student enrolls at Gateway, the counselor works with each student to create, sorry, I lost my spot, to create a detailed course outline based on that student's individual needs and goals. Based on this understanding, we created the following aim statement to monitor course completion rates. By the end of fall semester 2019, 75% of Gateway to College students will complete the courses in their grad plan for that semester. When we then worked with the group to identify the main barriers to course completion: mental health, academic skills, bad habits, and service capacity. From these top four drivers, we brainstormed the following change ideas: Create a MOU with social advocates to youth, say, to provide onsite counseling to students who are suffering from anxiety, depression, and other mental health issues. Conduct a universal needs assessment survey to identify student concerns. Hold empathy interviews with students who have dropped a college-level course to identify barriers. Provide rewards and recognition for student attendance to encourage students to come to school every day. Prior to dismissing school for the year due to COVID-19, the status for each driver is as follows. For mental health, students were beginning to develop relationships with the state counselors and meeting with them on a more regular basis. Since the state contract was committed for the entire semester, students are still being encouraged to meet with the counselors via Zoom. Academic skills: As of October 2, 2019, nine students, or 25% of the Gateway to College students, were identified with special needs and IEPs. The Gateway charter school was not, was not designed for this level of accommodations. Bad habits: At the start of the new semester in January, students were given recognition and rewards for improved attendance. Unfortunately, this was not having an impact on students who were chronically absent. Service capacity: Since the decision was made to close Gateway to College, the teachers, director, and counselors have been working to find appropriate alternative placement for those students who will not have graduated by the end of this semester.
Drivers that emerged for San Antonio were counseling, the referral to old ed process, mentor days, and credits. At this point, we were all in agreement that we needed to increase the available counseling support to reach the desired outcomes. So the first change we made was to hire Susie Rodriguez Armento as a college career counselor and the ever resourcful Sharon Howell as a full-time school counselor. The number of meetings between students and counselors increased greatly between the first and fourth marking period. Now, this number in the first marking period was collected when there was one part-time counselor there, just for 0.25% of the time. There just wasn't capacity to see everyone, and the focus at that point was more on meeting the needs of the students you could reach, rather than collecting a lot of data. So this number in the first marking period could be slightly more, but the significance here isn't just a change in staffing. This was a change in system. A shift in culture began moving throughout the school. Students were actively seeking out opportunities to discuss graduation status and scholarship opportunities. Resources were laid out for them. Assistance and guidance was readily available to them, and as the teachers have shared in the video, students' hope and vision for their future started to bubble up in their daily work ethic and attitudes towards school. Ms. Howell stated it perfectly when she said, "My goal was to give teachers more time to teach instead of all the things that fall under the counseling curriculum." And with her system, she was able to do just that. One issue that is remaining is around elective credits, and this pops up a lot in those counselor conversations around schedule and graduation status. They need more opportunities for electives. The staff struggles to find meaningful electives when there's not enough staff to provide more than core courses. It is their hope and dream to be able to provide electives which are motivating and engaging for the students and directly correlated to students' future interests. Sharon is in the process of creating a comprehensive guidance plan to build the infrastructure for a school counseling system that is sustainable for San Antonio, given there is adequate counseling support to staff it. Just as teachers have specific curriculum that they must deliver, this system is based on curriculum that counselors deliver. Another success at San Antonio has been the implementation of Jump Start. Jump Start is exactly what it sounds like. It is a jump start into college, giving students a chance to get ahead of the game. Implementing a program like this can be a slow process. The good news here is how much interest the students had in participating. Those nine students which signed up for counseling 270, well, that's 20% of the senior class, and that's just the number that signed up before distance learning. There was a lot more interest shown by the kids before distance learning began. Another tactic the teachers and staff took to tackle student motivation was to bring in guest speakers. We had really positive feedback from the students. In fact, 88% said that their outlook on future and college career path increased significantly from the Victor Rios presentation. Here's another success from our changes, and this is no small feat. Forty-six scholarship applications submitted and four scholarship recipients awarded so far. With the structure and support of Sharon Howell, Sherry Lee, and Susie Rodriguez Armento, San Antonio had a significant number of students write essays and apply for scholarships. This team was equally focused on helping students to develop a career path. They assisted upwards of 30 students to obtain work permits. Seven students participated in a program with North Bay Construction Corps. The team organized field trips to local industries such as Lucasfilm, as well as a food and bev summit for students interested in joining that workforce, and one for social justice, which focused on being more involved in our community. Assistant Principal Eric Smith engaged students with LoCien, a leadership group that serves as a liaison between the Latin community and the wider community. In addition, he organized trips to local junior colleges for students to further develop and get excited for their future. Unfortunately, COVID-19 got in the way of some of these opportunities. The effort reflects just how much the presence of a complete counseling department and additional admin helped to encourage students to make plans for after high school. All of this was possible because of the intentionality of the system change at San Antonio. The desire to do this has always been there. This year, they had the staffing and support to accomplish this for their students. As you heard in the videos, having the support on campus full-time supported both teachers and students, and was the keystone to these accomplishments. One great tool I'd like to share was created by Susie, the college career counselor. This pamphlet is written to be accessible to all high school students and serves as a sort of checklist to be used throughout their high school career to keep them on track for graduation and focused on the futures ahead of them.
So the last thing that we want to tell you about this evening is how we revised the way students are referred to alternative education. This emerged as a larger change idea for our district. We realized that we needed to develop a consistent referral process. With the input of high school counselors and administration, we identified breakdowns in our system. We created a document to help parents, students, and sites to make the best choice for the student, and we sent out 76 letters to And we sent out seventy-six letters to credit-deficient students at Petaluma High School in English and in Spanish to attend an informational meeting on February 18th. The purpose of this meeting was to give students an opportunity to learn about their options. The meeting was really well-attended. And thank you to board members who were able to attend that meeting.
Is that credit deficient at a certain grade level? Or all four grades?
Yeah, so we had, we mostly had kids who were ninth and tenth graders attend the meeting because we noted that with our credit matrix, that was really where we could capture those kids who could make a difference for. So the results of the February 18th meeting are captured in this particular PDSA cycle. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive. Here's a quote from one of the counselors. She said, "We got a lot of interest and positive feedback from students and families after yesterday's informational meeting. That was super helpful. Can you provide me with a copy of the handout describing the different school sites and requirements? I would love to be able to start providing that to families for future reference." And I just, on a side note, I just want to say that I had a counselor contact me today for an update on that handout because they're using it to help to place students correctly, especially with the closures of Gateway to College. So before the coronavirus school closures, we captured some feedback from San Antonio teachers and staff in this video. If you haven't had a chance to see it, we hope you will take the time to hear how San Antonio teachers and staff felt supported. We also received written feedback from Carpe DM High School, Sonoma Mountain High School noting that the Mentor Me Diversion Program, professional development workshops that they attended, and the enhancement of their classroom environment were very much appreciated and had a positive impact on their students. And finally, here are some additional testimonials gleaned from a recent survey we gave. It was great to hear from our teachers and admin that our work was well-received and appreciated. We're very proud of our work this year, and we hope that the district will continue to utilize the improvement science model in continued work with alternative schools and beyond. Thank you again, everybody, for providing the time to share our work this evening.
Yes, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the public comment section of the meeting.
Ellen, can I just say something real quick before we move on? I just wanted to thank the TOSA team for all their wonderful work this year. You know, it's no small thing to bring in people from quote-unquote "the outside," even though, you know, two of the three were district employees. And if you talk to them about how the year initially started off versus where they're at now, you know, just a huge change. You know, rightly so, the staffs at these schools are protective of their, you know, their culture and of their programs. And, you know, I think, you know, once the TOSA's built some trust and were able to show that they weren't there necessarily to tell the school they were doing anything wrong. They weren't there necessarily to even tell them what to do. They were there to facilitate this improvement science process. And it's just great that we were able to train and build capacity within our district with our own employees. But did a great job. We had a lot of great support from Lindsay at SCO, Lindsay Munn, and the staffs at each of the schools, the administration, the students. Just, it's been wonderful to see where we've been able to come and the systematic things that are now in place that will live on past, you know, past this. And then lastly, I just want to say, Carpe is no longer going forward. They've, you know, they've gotten out of CSI status. So, and we're gonna talk about this later in the agenda, but yeah, so that's great work. I just wanted to say, great job. Thank you, everyone.
They were amazing. That was amazing.
And can I also ask, what span of time was represented in this self-study of sorts?
Just this school year.
Wow.
It's amazing. It was really evident in the interviews, you know, that they, that the kids saw the difference of thinking about their future differently. That it wasn't just, you know, marking time without having, you know, a support of just like, "Look, you can do this. You can do this. This is open to you." And all those scholarships.
That was impressive.
You guys did amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're really proud of the work and we're really excited to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Now it is time for public comment.
Okay, we have thirteen public comments tonight.
Okay.
The first two are from Linda Judah. The first topic is hazard pay. "We have many dedicated staff members who continue to show up on-site to serve our students and families. Folks who are preparing and passing out homework packets and lunches. All of these people are doing so at personal risk to themselves and their families, so they should be receiving hazard pay. Please see how we can compensate these dedicated folks for their service during this emergency." Thank you. Linda's second comment is distance learning and grading. "I truthfully do not see any merit in lowering student scores during this emergency, even if students turn in no assignments. Many families are struggling mentally, emotionally, financially, physically. We have no idea of knowing exactly what sort of situation individual students are facing. I understand the need to have some sort of contact for attendance purposes and the need to serve our students and families by making efforts to check in with them regularly, support them in ways that we can, and continue to provide opportunities to learn and advance. That being said, I am very much opposed to basing a measure of content mastery on a period of time when content is being delivered under such changed circumstances. It would make sense to have the sixth grading period be reflective of the distance learning content, but the final score based on student performance prior to distance learning. Thank you for your consideration." Next, we have a comment from Amber Zoboslay regarding distance learning during COVID-19. "I am concerned that the decisions about implementing distance learning during COVID-19 in our city schools are disproportionately impacting students who are more susceptible to punitive policies. We need a simplified policy that uplifts those with limited access to resources during this time. Resources could be defined in many terms right now, but to give a few examples. One, language access as a resource. Parents who are Spanish or indigenous language speakers do not have the same access to information about the current grading requirements. Some Spanish-speaking parents are not receiving learning guidelines in Spanish. Two, parental access as a resource. Students in dual-income working families do not have access to learning support at home. Parents are failing to support high-level student workloads while juggling their own workloads. Three, technology as a resource. The shift to a one-hundred-percent virtual learning environment is biased towards students with existing high-level access to technology. For those experiencing barriers to technology access, it's not just a matter of providing free internet. Some students have tech-savvy parents to support them, others do not. Four, income as a barrier. Low-income wage earners are not able to work from home. Students whose parents or guardians are essential workers working outside the home at this time do not have access to the same level of support or guidance as those from wealthier job sectors that can accommodate the shift to working from home. Not all students have their own room or table to work at. What can we do about it? We need a culturally responsive approach that accounts for learning biases that will arise from disparities in access to education during this time. This is not a pull-up-your-bootstraps moment in history. This is a take-a-deep-breath-and-pause moment. One, relationships and well-being should take priority over assignment and behavioral compliance. Two, fill our students' homes with books, not learning packets or assignments. Three, accommodate asynchronous learning over maintaining schedules so students can access the conversation when possible, not when required. Four, resist the white supremacy cultural tendencies: sense of urgency, product over process, more is better, et cetera, and instead embrace a trauma-informed approach to teaching during coronavirus that embodies safety, connectedness, and hope. Five, don't hold it against students who can't produce as much, are less responsive or responsible. Distance learning exposes and exacerbates the educational opportunity gap created by poverty and the institutional racism. These gaps will be widened by students experiencing a greater lack of routine, less support from parents, more chaos. Six, establish parameters so teachers don't plan to punish students who can't accomplish academic work under these conditions. If we give everyone a pass right now, children who are marginalized and oppressed won't be further hurt. And seven, provide simple guidelines on work requirements that can be easily understood by parents and students regardless of language, time to spend reading about distance learning guidelines, et cetera. Work is optional. Grading is optional." The next comment is from Bailey Malone regarding distance learning grades. "I am concerned about the inequitable impacts of allowing teachers to lower grades based on unsatisfactory or uncompleted work, especially for those students who don't have access to or experience with technology, who don't have a quiet and dedicated workspace, who require specialized learning environments and assistance, who are suffering mental health effects from this crisis, who are working or helping with their siblings and households, or whose parents aren't able to assist them with schoolwork. During this unprecedented global pandemic and stay-at-home order, the district should instruct teachers to provide flexible, responsive, trauma-informed, remote work, especially given that it is taking place on a brand-new platform and format. Give students the opportunity to improve their grade by engaging with the assigned work as they are able and coordinate the amount of work assigned across teachers so that students aren't inundated with work during this already incredibly stressful and uncertain time." Next, Meti Bustillos regarding past fail grades. "Who I am: I am an educator of twenty-four years in California's public school system. I am writing to you because I believe in the system. I have worked at the elementary, junior high, and now for the School of Education at Sonoma, working with student teachers. I am a parent of a middle-school student of Petaluma City Schools. I consider myself an advocate of struggling learners and families that are less equipped and knowledgeable of our system. I am also a member of the Advisory Board for TIDE, Team for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity. My comment: Distance learning exposes and exacerbates the educational opportunity gaps created by poverty and institutional racism. We are concerned about the inequitable impacts of allowing teachers to lower grades based on unsatisfactory or uncompleted work, especially for those students who are adjusting to an unfamiliar learning platform and format, don't have access to or experience with technology, don't have a quiet and dedicated workspace, require specialized learning environments and assistants, are suffering mental health effects from this crisis, are working or helping with their siblings and households, have parents who aren't able to assist them with schoolwork. We believe in our teachers, administrators, and that you, the board, is doing the very best for our students and families. Thank you. As a partner and supporter of the school district, we respectfully offer our thoughts and concerns. During this unprecedented global pandemic and stay-at-home order, the district should instruct teachers to provide flexible, responsive, trauma-informed, remote work. Give students the opportunity to improve their grade by engaging with the assigned work as they are able, but do not penalize them by lowering their grades. Design a process to help students whose work is unsatisfactory or incomplete after the stay-at-home order is lifted. Coordinate the amount of work assigned across teachers so that students aren't inundated with work during this already incredibly stressful and uncertain time. Share all of the information about distance learning grades in multiple languages and through multiple mediums. We further offer a final suggestion. No student will receive a grade of F (fail) for any class. We ask that teachers be instructed and supported to give any failing student a grade of SC (student of concern). This grade of SC would flag the student where, when new procedures or a new normal has been established, for example, banned lifting, school resumes, or other, this student will take part of a special SST study, student-study-team-type group, where makeup work, assignments, projects, and tests will be discussed and planned with the student, guardians, teacher, and administrator with a timeline. At that point, a grade will be issued to the student's permanent record. Thank you for your time." Next one is from Christine Walker regarding distance learning grades. "Distance learning evaluation: Please be lenient. This shelter-in-place order is having a ripple effect through many aspects of student lives, and their sense of stability has been profoundly disrupted. This kind of stress doesn't lend itself to academic achievement, and teachers are equally stretched. Thank you for your consideration." Eliza Dodge, comment regarding grading during online learning. "I am concerned about the inequitable impacts of allowing teachers to lower grades based on unsatisfactory or uncompleted work, especially for those students who don't have access to or experience with technology, who don't have a quiet and dedicated workspace, who require specialized learning environments and assistants, who are suffering mental health effects from this crisis, who are working or helping with their siblings and households, or whose parents aren't able to assist them with schoolwork. During this unprecedented global pandemic and stay-at-home order, the district should instruct teachers to provide flexible, responsive, trauma-informed, remote work, especially given that this is taking place on a brand-new learning platform and format. Give students the opportunity to improve their grade by engaging with the assigned work as they are able and coordinate the amount of work assigned across teachers so that students aren't inundated with work during this already incredibly stressful and uncertain time." Next, a comment from Brenda Martin regarding grading on distance learning. "I would just like to say that in regards to the grading system for distance learning, I think that there has been consideration of a few scenarios, except a couple that could affect a certain student population. Obviously, as you know, there are some students who may not have access to technology or have the support at home to complete their assignments, ELD, and students with any type of learning disabilities. Some children who have IEPs and accommodations can access extra support, but this isn't, this is not consistent. As a parent of one of these students, I have to rely on an older college graduate son to support my child or do tutoring via Zoom with a learning center. Not all parents have these resources. This is a hard time for juniors or seniors who are working to keep their grades up for potential colleges. They may have had some circumstances going on earlier in the semester which interfered in their performance and should be allowed to do extra credit to bring up their grades. Thank you for your time." Paige Green regarding students' GPA should not be negatively affected by distance learning. "I am writing on behalf of TIDE, Team for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity, and the three-hundred-and-fifteen community members who signed a petition because they are concerned about the inequitable impacts of allowing teachers to lower grades based on unsatisfactory or uncompleted work, especially for those students who are adjusting to an unfamiliar learning platform and format, don't have access to or experience with technology, don't have a quiet and dedicated workspace, require specialized learning environments and assistance, are suffering mental health effects from this crisis, are working or helping with their siblings and households, have parents who aren't able to assist them with schoolwork. During this unprecedented global pandemic and stay-at-home order, the district should instruct teachers to provide flexible, responsive, trauma-informed, remote work. Give students the opportunity to improve their grade by engaging with the assigned work as they are able, but do not penalize them by lowering their grades. Design a process to help students..." Design a process to help students whose work is unsatisfactory or incomplete after the stay-at-home order is lifted. Coordinate the amount of work assigned across teachers so that students aren't inundated with work during this already incredibly stressful and uncertain time. Share all of the information about distance learning grades in multiple languages and through multiple mediums. We hope the Petaluma School District will consider their decision to allow teachers to give students who do not earn credit on all class assignments, a lower grade which could negatively impact GPA. Many other school districts in the greater San Francisco Bay area have made the switch to a more equitable grading system during this unprecedented time, and we hope the Petaluma City Schools will follow suit. Thank you for your time and service to our community. Next comment is from Loretta Crismaghi, President, CSEA, Petaluma, Chapter 212 regarding classified layoffs. I want to share CSEA's opinion of these layoffs. We feel that classified positions have previously been cut to the bone and did not expect services further reduced like this. Regardless of what economic uncertainty the future may bring, we are not financially destitute and we beg you to postpone making such cuts at this time. As it stands, when you arrive at the district office, you are greeted by a receptionist who helps direct you. This position also takes calls, handles parcel tax information, assists by tracking inter and intra transfers, and receives packages. As you continue on through the district office corridor, you see a human resources assistant. With no one to receive the visitors, the natural effect of someone seeking assistance may be to interrupt this HR position. Who will answer the calls? If the answer is an automated service, this doesn't seem like a lack of work. It seems like work transferred to someone else. For the maintenance position, this position has been vacant before, but was brought back by the district to create a path for our employees to move into the maintenance specialist positions. This position helps the specialists as well as performs a variety of duties, allowing the specialists the time to perform their jobs more efficiently. For the school bus automotive three position, this position performs the maintenance of school buses required by the California Highway Patrol and currently provides contract services to Petaluma Fire Department, fire engines, ambulances, and other vehicles of support. This will exceed the number of vehicle ratio to mechanic as soon as the layoff takes place. We fear our fleet will fall behind and therefore not be available for use when needed to drive children. Secretary Food and Nutrition Services, this position supports the Director of Nutrition Services. This position has been vacant since February. This employee handles the deposits from the various sites each day from the sale of meals and milk and processes applications for free and reduced lunches. While Titan, the online application and payment program, may reduce the number of applications to be processed, PCS has many families who do not have access or do not feel comfortable using online applications and therefore necessitate physical documents which the Secretary of Food and Nutrition has to physically process. Secretary at Rise, this position also supports San Antonio High School with attendance, et cetera. Student Advisor, this position handles minor behavior issues with students and referrals and also provides supervision during breaks and lunches. This employee knows many of the students and has a good rapport with them. The purpose of these brief summaries is to help you see the impact of the decisions being made tonight to encourage questions be asked about the lack of work and where it is going before deciding to cut services. These are serious decisions that have long-term consequences. The classified ranks have suffered layoffs more often than I care to remember. In the past five years, three new management jobs have been added to our district. They are Assistant Director Maintenance and Operations, salary $89,982. Director of Learning and Innovation, salary $130,979. Construction Manager, salary $113,596. The history of these hirings was in the letter I sent to you earlier today. On 6/23/15, the position of Director of Maintenance and Operations was upgraded and given a substantial salary increase with the title change and duty changes to Director Facilities and Maintenance. That employee was going to oversee construction projects for our district for the added salary. One new classified job has been added to the Facilities and Maintenance Department as well. A second secretary was added on 11/13/18, effective 11/26/18, at Step 8A at 18:04 per hour, a job that this district had not previously had. If a layoff happens, you lose that work and it is unjust to transfer it to another position. We'd also like to point out that at least some of those employees who received layoff notices were simultaneously placed on paid administrative leave, so although they will receive money, the work they performed was stopped as of April 17. I ask that you take some time and ask some questions of the school district before you render a decision. Thanks for your consideration in this matter. And then next one is from Sandra Larson regarding Budget Committee Planning for Budget Cuts. We are in unprecedented times for sure, and no one knows what the state budget will look like when they finally have one. I have heard it may be delayed until after the July 15 income tax deadline. Regardless of the delay, I think, I think we all can envision a more astute time ahead. That brings me to the budget cuts and the need for the district to develop a process to prioritize how and when cuts will be made. Sadly, we have been down this road before and we have experience in working together to ensure that we provide the best possible education to our students. During the last round of cuts, we had meetings to hear from all stakeholders before any cuts were even discussed. We all had the information, actual cost of programs, needed to prioritize what cuts would be most effective. All suggested cuts went to a voting budget committee that was made up of three classified members, three certificated members, three admin, and three confidential employees. Each suggested reduction or program change was voted on and had to be approved by that committee before it went to the board. In addition, at least one person from each group represented had to vote yes for it to go to the board. I am not suggesting that this is the process we have to follow this time if budget cuts are necessary, rather that there needs to be a process developed before any further cuts are made. The current budget committee has not functioned in this way as of yet. The Federation is willing and able to work with the district to develop a process for working together if the need should arise in the coming months. And our last one is from Phoebe Ellis, topic Senior Activities. I wanted to thank you all for continuing to discuss graduation 2020 as I see it is on your agenda this evening. I do believe the discussion needs to include other senior activities such as prom and senior recognition night. I have a senior at PHS, so I am a little biased, but I am focused on this topic for all of our seniors in this district. I participated in the limited survey, not sure why there has to be a choice between a virtual distant celebration and proper graduation. Let's plan both. I have been talking to many parents and students and researching what other districts and colleges are doing across the country. It will take some time, effort, and creativity, but let's do this for our students. Why not organize a planning committee including students, parents, teachers, and administrators and start planning for some event on scheduled graduation dates for comprehensive and alternative high schools? And then schedule proper in-person ceremonies for later in summer. And the same idea for the prom. What is the plan for the proms? The classes have raised so much money and put down deposits. What happens with deposits? Can they use deposits to reschedule later in summer? Let's get creative with the parade, prom and cars at the fairgrounds, sort of like a drive-in movie. Again, many ideas, but someone needs to take on the leadership and planning. And what happens to all of the class, the money, I'm sorry, and what happens to all of that class money if not spent? What about senior recognition night? This is a ceremony where seniors gather with their families and are recognized with different awards, scholarships, and honors. Is there a way to prepare these folders for seniors with a nice program and mail them? Perhaps teachers could be asked to participate and write letters to students that could be included in these files. The Petaluma Educational Foundation sent a nice letter and program in the mail for their scholarship night. I know students are getting frustrated as our parents because schools and administration continue to say that they are waiting for guidelines. What are we waiting for? We can start planning with the social distance guidelines that exist today. Hopefully, the guidelines will only get less stringent by the end of May. Sorry to be so insistent with these questions, but spring semester of senior year is an essential experience that we all need to make happen for our students and loved ones. Who ultimately makes these decisions? Let's get planning and have some fun. Again, hope you are all doing well during these challenging times and thank you for serving in our community. End of our public comments.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. That was great.
You read those really well.
Yeah.
Okay, we are now at the consent agenda.
I have a request for the consent agenda. Let me get my notes. I'd like to request that we remove item 9.2.6, the purchase approval for the purchase and installation of surveillance cameras at all four secondary schools. And I'd like that removed from the consent agenda and put into discussion.
Discussing or can it be an action item?
I think it should be an action item.
It doesn't have to be. It can just go to discussion.
That works. I don't care. Whatever you want.
I mean, unless we want to act on it. I mean, I don't care. I just want it off the consent agenda so we can discuss it before we pass it.
Well, I think it'll have to be an action item.
Yeah, you have to put it on as an action and then you can then go through discussion at the action.
Okay, that's what I am asking for.
Perfect. If you need a second, I second.
Okay, so all in favor? So we will move 9.2.6 to the action items. Okay, do we need to give it a number? This is new for me.
No, we can just, we'll reference it as 9.2.6.
Okay, all right, perfect. So we will move that. Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, before we vote, is there any discussion besides that one that we've moved?
Yeah, I'd just like to call out 9.2.2 and thank Chris and our county library people for this collaboration. I think this is a great example of how our local government and our school boards can be working together to provide, you know, co-curricular activities and resources for our students. I love it.
Yes, I do too. Thank you for bringing that up, Sheldon.
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, issues? Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Okay, now we move down to action items. Why don't we, why don't we talk about the 9.2.6 first before we move on to the other action items?
I think Chris, maybe you want to give a background on that?
Is she muted?
I don't know, Chris, either?
Yeah, I'm here now. Yeah, I was muted. They had to unmute me. Okay, so as you all know, we have a Department of Justice grant that we received last year and that can pay for a handful of things related to vaping and tobacco cessation. Liz, feel free to jump in if you, if you feel moved. This item, this item in particular is to replace and to expand some of the camera systems that we have at two of our comprehensive high schools and then to add cameras to the two comprehensive junior high schools.
Where would the cameras be?
They're going to be installed throughout the campus. I think there's what, nine at the largest campus? And, you know, they're throughout the campus. So for example, a year and a half ago, we had some vandalism come in and they broke eight windows at Casa and numerous windows at Petaluma High School. And unfortunately, the existing cameras, the lens had been fogged up and so we were not able to, we were not able to identify. Well, actually, we were through other means later, but the cameras themselves did not assist us in that. So from, from a campus security and from a ability for us to manage and maintain our facilities after hours as well as during the school day, we think cameras are important. I will also tell you that in my experience, most high schools have implemented many years ago much more extensive camera systems than we have on our campuses. So Liz, I don't know if you want to add in about the vaping piece?
Yeah, I was, I mean, not as much the vaping piece. It was just, I mean, this is all tied in with the tobacco grant. We do have vape detectors and vape sensors. As you've known, those have been board-approved in the past. But as a part of the camera process, Brian Dufour, our Department of Justice Grant Coordinator, actually did a walk with the principals and with the camera companies to kind of find spots that could look for things like vandalism, ingress and egress and kind of bigger picture things. It's not necessarily to, you know, to target things that are happening in the bathroom. It's more looking for bigger patterns of where we might need more of our campus supervisors and then for larger ingress and egress areas like parking lots and the quad.
Yeah.
Brian is on the call and I don't know, Brian, if you wanted to weigh in a little bit on that process of camera locations.
Well, actually, let me step in there for a minute.
Okay.
So, you know, this is a use it or lose it grant and we can only, we can really only utilize it for this. Otherwise, it goes back. The issue that's, that's been out there for some time, I'm going back to board policy 3515. We've used primarily cameras to, the board recognizes the importance of just protecting district property, facilities, and equipment. And in that particular policy, it's very specific that cameras shall not be placed in areas where student staff or community members have a reasonable expectation of privacy. So the purpose is to put those cameras in a thoughtful way that will protect our, protect our public primary location areas and not violate anybody's privacy. But each year, we've had a very strong push from community members and from parents about, about adding surveillance equipment on our campuses for safety purposes. And this is our opportunity if we're going to do it because it's a hefty chunk of money, as you can see. And if not, we'll, we'll just, we'll send it back.
So how many? I'm not clear on how many cameras there have been at the high schools that are no longer operable and why they remained inoperable after the, after the campuses were vandalized.
Yeah.
They're actually, they actually are operable. We had them repaired. We had, we had the camera company come out when we found out that.
How many are we talking about? At Casa and at Petaluma?
I don't know. I don't know. Does Brian have that information? Because I didn't do the walkthrough.
This is, this is David Bisharian.
Yeah, Brian and David have that and they're both on the call. Okay.
And so currently there are 13 cameras at Casa Grande, six outdoors, seven indoors. And there are six cameras at Petaluma High, five outdoor, one indoor.
Sorry, Petaluma High, sorry.
Six.
How many? Six, six at Petaluma High?
Why, there are currently six, five of them are outdoor and one is indoor.
Where are the indoor cameras? I think those are what I'm more concerned about, in the outdoor ones.
Oh, and also just focusing on parking lots seems, maybe we don't need 21 cameras at Casa. How did this number come up?
Got a question for, for me.
Whoever knows the answer.
Was the number determined by the walkthrough that was done?
Yes, because it was between the principal and the company. I think, Brian, this is where you can jump through, jump in about your process. Does he, does he need to be unmuted?
Yes, he does. Yes, he does.
Probably can't talk.
There he is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. So, yeah, we did a walkthrough with the vendors, each vendor, with the, and the teams at the, at the school. The primary goal was to ensure that we were able to kind of triangulate with the sensors that were installed. So to kind of alleviate some of the difficulty that was on the school staff when a sensor went off, if you're not able to respond or have any idea what's happening there immediately, then there's no opportunity for intervention. So the thought was, as the cameras will capture that and then also while doing that, be sure that we're, we're covering for security around the grounds. And so those were kind of the dual purposes as we walked through and certainly to replicate or do a better job than the cameras that were currently there, either with angling or newer technology for the camera that would capture more or capture more at night and those types of things.
Where are they inside the school? You said there were five out and one in. Where, where are the internal cameras? Or can you not?
David, are you able to answer that?
Yeah, I, I have to refer back to the camera feeds to give more detail, but to the best of my recollection, they are currently showing doors, entrances to doors and things like that, where people could come from the outside into a building.
And so. Go ahead, David, sorry.
I was gonna say, some of the additional cameras are going to be in hallway areas that will show, I'm sorry, my dog is. That will show the, the entrance, so the entrance and exit from some of the restrooms where there are vape sensors to try and triangulate some of that data.
So one of the, one of the things that you, that, that, I mean, certainly we could do as a, as a board is if there's particular areas that you have of concern, we can always add that to our board policy and navigate around those particular spots. I'm trying to get a, so were there particular, like, particular areas that you were concerned that there was going to be a placement of a camera that you're not comfortable with?
Me?
Well, no, just in general. I mean, anybody.
I'd like to get everybody's opinion. I have mine, but I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
So I guess I'm just wondering, so it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz or whoever, basically, it's going to be who, like, I guess, trying to capture whoever has set off a vape detector inside? Are they going to be used for anything else inside of the building as well?
So it's, I mean, it's, it's tied to vaping because it's tied to the tobacco grant, but the cameras themselves are cameras, you know, they're, they're just, it can't, like, it's like we said, you know, if there's, we've had vandalism on campuses and if, you know, if we can find out that that's on the camera, you know, or anything like that, general patterns where we might need our campus supervisor more. The, the whole thing with the vape is that, you know, if there is a large hallway and, you know, there's a bathroom in the hallway and one of our vape monitors goes off, there's no way that someone could, it comes an email to the assistant principals, you know. So the chances that they're actually in the office in front of their computer getting that email in the moment that it's happening are slim to none. So if they're finding a pattern with, you know, there's a lot of vaping happening in this particular bathroom based on what we're seeing from the sensors, then they can kind of look at, you know, what does that hallway look like? What kind of security do we have, you know, campus supervisor, campus supervision do we have in that hallway? That we can kind of help nip this in the bud and, and kind of, you know, keep those bathrooms clear and safe essentially.
The camera would be in the hallway, not in the bathroom?
Not in the bathroom. No, no cameras can be in the bathrooms. We can't put them in bathrooms and locker rooms or anything like that. It would just be out in the hallway so we can see, you know, what, what time of day are there large crowds going in and out of the bathroom?
Are they, one of those lines when you say lockers, are they going to have cameras near the, near the locker rooms? Since there's a lot of vandalism in locker rooms?
So again, we can't put.
We can't put it in it, but I mean, like, in hallways near.
In, I, I don't, Brian, was that a piece of your walkthrough with the principals? Was there anything in the vicinity of kind of egress and ingress from locker rooms and gyms?
Yes, that's correct. Entrance and exits of the locker rooms in particular.
Could somebody explain practically how these cameras are used every day? Because I don't think, you know, anyone's looking at a camera shot, you know, all day long. It's, it's a recording that is accessed when needed and then erased when we are clear that it's not needed. So could you, could you talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell you typically, typically that that's exactly what it is, is, is if, if there's a particular incident that has occurred and, and, you know, sometimes it's, it's something even more serious than what we're talking about. And at, in a particular location, it's used to verify that, you know, because sometimes it's, it's a he said, she said, or he said, he said, or she said, she said. So you use it to verify or you use it to determine, you know, who, who might be involved in whatever said incident. It's also used a lot for visitors on campus to identify a visitor and to make, reach out and make a contact when you're working with, with PD. For example, here's a typical situation. A student has come to the office and they have, they have said that there is, there is clearly a visitor or a, a, somebody on campus, an adult, that's not an employee. And they identify the location, campus supervisors go out there, there's no, the adult is not there. We have the ability then to go to the surveillance screen, look at it, identify it, take a, take a shot of that and then coordinate with PPD to see is this person on anybody's list? You know, I can tell you that in a, in a previous life, that happened. At my school, there was, there was somebody in the quad during one of our sec, our second lunch. We identified them, we contacted that high school, that PPD at that, in that district, and it was somebody who was on Megan's list. So for, as I think, is it Megan's list of sex offenders?
Yeah.
On a sex offender list, and then we, we were able to address it. And so it's, it's there. Nobody, it's, you know, I mean, we have not brought forward anything like this because we're really, I'm, you know, we're really not Big Brother and, you know, looking to do that.
Part of what surprised me was that, that's how, I, I certainly never had conversations or heard anybody or had an email requesting 55 cameras. And, and we already have 21 or 13 at Casa and six at Petaluma High. It seems like up in both of those, one is doubled.
Yeah, why is it such?
I mean, it seems like a lot and, and I don't know how.
Right.
I, I just never had lots of requests that we actually need. The grant itself, the grant itself has been fraught with all kinds of opinions and things about the original grant. And, and so, I don't know, I just, it was just red flag for me. I really wanted to hear from everybody else, whether they had any red flags or is it just my, my teaching Big Brother for many years that.
So.
Also, what are we going to do with this information? As Sheldon said, you get a ton, you know, it's running 24 hours a day. Where does that information go? What do we do with that information?
And how long do we?
That has to be policy and I personally feel that that has to come before we purchase 55 cameras. That's just me.
So David.
I understand your concern. I have the same because at St. Vincent, we have cameras and I was like, what is this? They really are, I don't know just how we're going to use them, but basically, like, if there is an incident, you can basically play the recording back.
Right.
See what actually took place. And it is safe for a certain amount of time. But I really, I think, I'm hoping that the intention is for safety. But I understand your concern also, like, do we need to have more policy around this before we approve it?
Yeah, you know, like.
Yeah.
Just like Liz was saying, a camera is a tool and it can be used in different ways. And what I'm hearing from the board is we don't want cameras used for policing purposes or from any kinds of invasions of privacy. But I suspect that we do appreciate that it can bring a layer of safety.
I can't hear you.
It can bring a layer of safety to, to campus.
And also clarity in, in certain incidents.
So we, you know, to, to go to Maddie's comments, because I think she's, she's rightly flagged some of the things. Clearly, we would not be bringing this forward if, if it was not in a grant. When the grant was written, surveillance cameras were put in. Totally unbeknownst to us, though, what would happen with the, with the officers situation. So now we're at a situation where we have to either spend that money by the end of June and have things. And when we spend, it means it has to be not only spent, it has to be installed by the end of June or we, we just, we send it back. And so it comes down to the question of, of, does it make sense to, to get the cameras installed? Don't have to, we don't have to necessarily, and yes, it's a little bit card after horse. If we want to change, if we want to change some of the policy, you'll have to look at the policy to see whether the policy meets your, your needs. But we can certainly change that policy before we would open those cameras up, per se. But if we don't approve a contract, we can't get a contractor out here to do that and meet that June deadline. That's my understanding. So I'm going to ask Chris, because she's the one that's, that, that would have the best idea on that particular piece related to vendors or David, one of the two.
Yeah, we need to, we need to get moving if we're going to do it because it, we are, we are pushing it at this point. They have to order all of the equipment, et cetera, et cetera, before it can actually be installed. So David, I don't know what conversations you had directly with the contractor. I wasn't, I wasn't part of those meetings, but I do have concerns about the ability to get this in and get this done if it's wait, if it, if it waits until May 12th.
Yeah.
What we could do though is, is we could set up an ad hoc committee with two board members and myself with, with Liz and David and Chris and we could go and, and do a walkthrough of the facilities and make sure that we get a sense of, you know, a final resting location because we're not committing to a, a, a final sitting location for these cameras right now. We're just committing to purchasing and getting a vendor onboard to install them.
And Gary, I would also say, and I don't know, David, if you're, if you're there, if you could answer this, my guess is we can also program the cameras to be on at certain times and not on at certain times as well. So I mean, if there was a concern about a particular camera location during the day, but it was really warranted after hours, my guess is that's probably an option. David, do you know?
Sure, yeah. The cameras are highly programmable. So they can, like, absolutely can be activated at certain times of day, deactivated at certain times of day. Set to activate on motion. And they.
Crazy idea of maybe getting students involved with the walkthroughs too. I mean, if it's the students that we know are not vaping, they're going to be relatively honest of where they know their friends are vaping. Sorry, like, we're all secretly sniffing this a little bit. Like, I just think they know it just like, as well, if not more than the adults do. And like, they're going to know about even just like the little intricacies of privacy things, right? Like which bathroom can you see into at different angles? Like, I could tell you the ones at Casa where you could probably see a boy peeing in the urinals versus which ones you couldn't, like, I didn't go into any of the men's restrooms in case.
So Caitlin, perhaps we should walk that campus so we can plug some of those holes.
It's been too long for me. I don't recall looking in boys' bathrooms, but I, I mean, it's possible.
I haven't since I turned a camera at an angle.
I can attest to that, that, you know, it's like, oh, God.
Right, it's, yeah, it's like, I'm not looking, but, oh my God. Yeah, I'd be much more comfortable with cameras that can be turned on like after school is over. Just not even necessarily every camera because I totally believe in like the student safety. And so, I don't know, for me, it's the balance of not wanting to be Big Brother, but like, I'm also a person that believes cops should have body cams. So, yeah, like.
All right.
You can see that the, on the camera, who's bullying who and who's.
Yeah.
Well, I can also tell you, we have a lot of people use our high school facilities in particular in our junior high after hours and.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I will tell you, I mean, I get a lot of complaints from our custodian staff and school site staff about outside user groups who come in and don't adequately restore the facility that they found. And so these cameras, I mean, there, there's so much value. And I will tell you, the police department, if you ask them, my guess is they would be in tremendous support of adding that level of security to our campuses. I, I've actually met with quite a few safety committees with parents. Many of our parents have expressed an interest in us having more, 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 more cameras on, on all of our campuses.
Well, I'm sure parents are onboard. I'm not worried about parents. I'm worried about teachers and students' sense of privacy, but at the same time, we are a public entity and it's public land, so there's really no reasonable right to privacy for the most part.
So I think that these are.
Other than in bathrooms.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I won't spy on y'all, you and the, using the urinals are fine.
So I think this is obviously, this is a, this is a hot button issue for us. It always has been. You know, we're, we're, we're an education institution. If we have $50,000, $100,000, what have you, we're going to try to spend it on the kids and not on things like this. But this is a unique situation that can only be spent on that. It's a very restricted DOJ grant. I go back and forth on this as you do. There's that, what's, you know, the whole privacy piece. And, you know, I truly believe that our campuses by and large are safe and we do a lot of things to make them safe. I just know that what's a tricky one for me is if it's my son or my daughter and there's an incident that occurred with them in a bathroom or outside in the quad area and something happened, God forbid, and we didn't have a camera there when that's a logical place to put one, then I'd, I'd question it as a parent. You know, not as a superintendent, but as a parent, I would question that as to, you know, why, why if, if we had the means to do that. So that's, that's the tricky part. And I don't know if there's a, I mean, there's a lot of things that are important.
Okay, with the time crunch for, to, to do this, how about if we do this, but we don't turn them on till we've come up with a policy and we know exactly where they are? With that, I don't know. I mean, we are under this time crunch, so we got to make a decision. We don't want to lose the money.
Well, I think we'd, we'd want a committee either way if we went that direction, with at least a couple of board members.
Right, but I think it's a good idea to not turn them on until we have policy. Yeah, totally. We have to get them installed by June 30th if we're going to have them. I don't want to give the DOJ any money. They don't need any money to fucking arrest people for existing.
And the grant covers installation?
Yes.
Yes.
Turnkey.
So, you know, if, if a couple of us could maybe take the lead to revisit the policies surrounding the cameras and then another couple go on the walkthroughs, I think we can cover our concerns.
We'll be involved.
Yeah.
I can, I can, if, if, if it's approved, I will, I'll reach out to you all, each individually and we'll, we would work that out.
Okay.
Perfect.
That sounds good.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Should we vote?
No, we have, move in a second.
You have to have us. I think you have a motion. Did you?
Oh, yeah, we don't have a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve the purchase of the cameras and the installation.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Could we have it with, is there any way to put the caveat in there that we're not going to use them until we figure it out? Is that, is that, should be part of it or?
You'd ask, you'd ask Sheldon to make an amended motion.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, let's see, we're working off of the, what was in the consent agenda. So let me take a look at how it's written here.
So it's purchase approval with KIS for the purchase and installation of surveillance cameras for Petaluma Joint Union High School District.
Okay, so I'm. Okay, so I'm-
This is a purchase.
Yeah, so I would move to amend the, uh, the motion that we do purchase and install, but we don't operate until, until we revisit the policy on their operation.
I second that amendment. All in favor?
I, I-
So that's, that's approving the amendment. Now we have to go and approve the actual purchase.
Really?
I move to approve the purchase with Sheldon's amendment.
With the amendment, right, second.
And, oh, so there's a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstaining? Yeah, I was close. Okay, next action. Pretty much, I really appreciate, because I really didn't know how I want, what I was thinking about it. So I appreciate-
You're just making us better.
It was a good conversation.
It's a good process.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, administrative, administration, human resources. Okay, resolution, this is a good one. 1920-27 of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, honoring the contributions, Elementary and Joint Union High School District, honoring the contributions of teachers to quality education and declaring the week of May 4th through 8th, 2020 as the week of the teacher.
Yay. I move to approve, so we can discuss.
Second.
Yeah, I mean, I think every week should be the week of the teacher. It's kind of sad, but also kind of fitting that it's happening right now during this insane time. Like, it just proves that teachers are amazing and, uh, F C K, I don't know how y'all do it, like.
Apparently, it's a labor of love, I'll tell you that much.
I want to add to Caitlin's comment and publicly acknowledge the amazing work that our teachers are doing, but also of our staff and our district leaders. I'm a teacher in my day job, and our lives have been turned upside down, and we're working our butts off. And then as a parent, we're, we have these responsibilities at home to watch over our kids as they adapt to this new environment. And I gotta say, the overall impression I'm getting from teachers is, is so positive. I mean, our, our kids, my kids, uh, love seeing their teachers' faces on the camera. As much as they don't like the distance learning, seeing the teacher and having that stability and that connection has been so meaningful for them in this time. And so I just want to say, thank you, thank you for the teachers and the staff.
Also, distance learning puts a whole other layer of work. I mean, you have your curriculum set up, and then all of a sudden, you've got to change it. And so, yeah, every day should be day of the teacher, but we'll settle for them. They're the heroes, so they're front, I wish that there was more recognition in the media about, you know, really how they created, and all of you also at, at the district office just created a, a whole new learning model out of nothing in two weeks. I'm, I'm just, I bow down to all of you. And the teachers being, you know, trying to deliver quality stuff, I mean, all of you are amazing. So anyway-
Agreed.
Do you like to go through the resolution?
And also, David, thank you for your video acknowledging everyone.
Do we move it already? All in favor?
Well, do you want to go through the, actually go through the resolution?
Yeah, reading to the record, that'd be great.
Yep, so, whereas California Education Code Section 37222 sets aside the second Wednesday in May as the day of the teacher and encourages suitable commemorative exercises directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. Whereas the Board of Education of Petaluma City School, Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts has the utmost respect and admiration for Petaluma's professional teachers who have dedicated their lives and their talents to the education of our students, who are truly our most precious and important resource. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes the truly vital role of teachers and realizing the vision of the California State Board of Education for California Public Education. All California students of the 21st century will attain the highest level of academic knowledge, applied learning and performance skills to ensure fulfilling personal lives and careers, and contribute to civic and economic progress in our diverse and changing democratic society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 8th, 2020, the week of the teacher, extending its sincere appreciation to the teachers in, in the district who make our public schools successful. And I'd just like to just piggyback on, on what, what the, what the board has said here. Our, our teachers are truly amazing. So impressed, every time I walk through a classroom or now, hearing the, all the things that are going on online, our teachers made such an incredibly smooth transition to distance learning. As a, as a district employee and as a parent in the district, I'm just so very, very thankful for our incredibly dedicated teachers.
Absolutely. Absolutely, pretty impressive. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
An extra one too, right?
Now we have the next-
Your puppy. Oh, yeah, she gets half a vote. She campaigned with me, so.
Now we move on to one that is not so happy. Resolution 1920-28 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, eliminating classified positions effective being 30th, 2020. I am not happy about this at all. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I mean-
Besides that it hurts our hearts?
Something we never want to be in the position to do, but every economic factor is pointing to a big downturn. COVID-19 isn't helping us out. And I mean, as awful as it is, the sooner we can decide these things, the more stability for everybody for the next year.
And with, with the governor threatening our COLA, which means our budget will take a big dump, it's not happy, but it's kind of inevitable.
And I want to also acknowledge that this is one step, not the sole step, that we are taking to make our, our district fiscally whole. It is a painful one, but what I appreciate from our district staff is the principles that I saw behind the rationales, which was first, uh, you know, service to students, and, and secondly, saving, minimizing impacts to our employees as much as possible. And there were other decisions that we're going to be making, including some of our agenda tonight, that, that demonstrate those other complementary choices that we're making, that we need to make to make our budget whole.
Yeah, well said. Yes, thank you, Sheldon. Any other comments before we have to vote on this? No, but just know that it's a difficult one for all of us. Yes, not something we take lightly. No, and I appreciate the input of different, you know, you know, about the, the positions and, you know, who the people are and things like that. It's important. Okay, we got a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next one. Resolution 1920-29 of the Board of Education, the Petaluma City Elementary School Districts, approving closure of the 6th Grade Academy at Petaluma Junior High. It's another one that, do I have a motion?
I move.
Second? Second, let's, discussion?
I'll take, I think I'll take this one.
Gary, fill us in.
I'll take this one. This is a tough one. The 6th Grade Academy was established back in 2011 and 12, and, um, the, I can't, the particulars as to why it was established is still being debated today. But the idea was that it was going to open up enrollment from outside the district. What, it did open up enrollment outside the district, but it also took critical enrollment from all of the elementary school sites, which created an imbalance, and that imbalance has gotten worse in the last two years. This is a conversation that we came this close to talk about last year with the board, and, um, it's, it's even worse now. So to put it in perspective, to, to really make it viable, half of the students really need to come from outside Petaluma City Schools District. It's always, when, when the program first begun, it was hovering around 60 students, and it was getting more than half of their students coming from outside the district. Fast forward to today, and the, the program needed to be able to run at least at a minimum of a 28 to 1, but between 28 to 32 to 1, and, and we were running two full sections of that for many, many years. In the last few years, there's been a gradual decline for a variety of reasons, I'm sure. And in the current enrollment, we have 19 students that have tentatively enrolled. They haven't been accepted. They've expressed interest in enrolling, and only two of those students are from outside the district. And so they don't meet any of the metrics to, for viability. And our numbers are off on a negative at Grant, McNear, Valley Vista, and they just become exacerbated in that situation. When, so example, like, I want to say, I think at Grant, we're, we're around 44 students for two grade levels, two sixth, two sixth grade levels were the students. And then there's four students on that list that would be moving to a program that would drop that number even farther. And so, you know, we're at a point right now where we, we, um, the, the, the costs associated with it, it's one of our most, you know, it's, it's one of our most expensive programs from the sense of what it does to the other schools itself. It's a great, it's a great program. The teachers are, have done a phenomenal job with the students over the year. It's, it's time-tested. I think the model, the model holds its weight, perhaps in the 7th and the 8th grade, because it's very similar to the 6th grade model. But it is, in this whole process of really taking a hard look at our, our, what the intent was from the 6th Grade Academy, where we are today with it, we had to bring it forward as a recommendation. It's just too, it's too detrimental to, it's what, kind of one of those things, whenever you run, open up a school like that, it really shouldn't do significant harm to the other schools. It should be a value-added, and, and it really has affected the, the enrollment at, particularly at McNear, Grant, and Valley Vista.
Okay, any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, enough action. Let's go to discussion. LCAP update. I believe that would be Mr. Cliff.
Yeah, hey, Gary, are you allowed to let me share my screen? Or should I just do this verbally?
Um, I don't, I'm not the host, so.
As a co-host, Cliff, you should be able to share your screen.
You should be able to now, though.
All right.
Happy birthday.
You too.
Happy birthday. It's your birthday, Maddie and Cliff?
Maddie and I had a birthday, how many days ago?
Yeah.
11 days ago.
It's a while ago.
That's so long ago. Maddie, you're dramatic.
I was able to wish him a happy birthday.
That's like a fourth of a quarantine away.
Yeah, it's true.
So there was a webinar that I participated in today. I thought it was yesterday. I had it on my schedule twice, once for yesterday, once for today. Luckily, I didn't miss it. So I have to be careful here, because none of this is approved yet. This is all anticipated, that the governor will be issuing a new executive order that will address the LCAP. But until then, this is all just anticipated. This is the guidance that the Accountability Offices at the, at the CDE, this is the guidance they gave to the governor to include, but final language, you know, could, could differ. So the big thing is, they said, you know, obviously, you're not meeting with stakeholders. You know, your plan was interrupted. And, you know, they, they advised us against, even though we could have public meetings like a Zoom, just in terms of equity and access and all that, they decided, they, they, they said, you know, just kind of be, you know, stay in a holding pattern for now. So it does say, uh, there's an executive order anticipated to be published very soon, which would push the three-year LCAP back a year. So in its place would be a one-year LCAP, just a 2020, 2021 LCAP. A new template would be produced just for the one year. Um, and they're talking about pushing the deadline back to mid-December instead of before the end of the school year. So instead of coming in June like it normally does along with the budget, it would be separated out from the budget, and it would be pushed to December. And, uh, the, the three-year LCAP would be pushed into development next year for a 2021 to 2022 through 23 and 24. I said they separate the budgets. They are thinking about adding some type of requirement for districts to articulate how they're responding, you know, to changes in program and to students during the outbreak. While the governor can issue an executive order and change timelines, only an act of the legislature can change content, metrics, process, things like that. So they're anticipating that the legislature will take this up as soon as they, you know, get back together. But until they do, all the governor can do is issue an ex, you know, kind of an extension of the timeline, the content, the metrics. So for example, uh, none of the metrics will be usable from this current school year since all testing was suspended. So there, there will be no metrics, there will be no dashboard as we know it. But again, that has to come from the legislature. And then they did say, they, they put together some FAQs that'll come out as soon as the executive order comes out. And further information will be coming on SIPs. So they didn't, they didn't really hint anything on the SIPs of it, so there would be, it would be upcoming. What's different about the SIPs is there isn't a required timeline. We've been trying to align them with the LCAP process and bring those in June, you know, for approval for the next school year, so that we're planning ahead of time. But there, there is no time limit there. So we could, we could push that into the fall, so we have an opportunity, hopefully, to come back and engage our stakeholders. For now, my guidance to the principles was to continue as if we're still going to meet that June deadline until we hear more information. So that's the update on the LCAP. Hot off the press, if there's any questions.
Cliff, if this, uh, if this timeline does get approved by legislature, are you anticipating, uh, re, rebooting that process in the summer, or wait till the fall, or what? Or have you thought of that yet?
We rebooted as soon as we're able to get back together. So hopefully sooner than later. The December date obviously gives us time, a little bit of time in the fall, to reboot and come up with a one-year plan. For the most part, that's just going to be carrying over the current LCAP just into the next year. So we already kind of have a, a template. But then we would, right after that, we'd jump right back into the three-year plan in the spring. So it's, it's going to be busy.
Is there any reason why they're doing a one-year LCAP that's just basically gonna, everybody's going to put in what they had this year? So why not just start with a three-year plan? You know, developing that three-year plan with a lot more, you know, in the fall, when we can, if, if we can. I mean, I don't understand, I mean, I know that that's beyond your control and our control, but I don't understand what use a one-year LCAP would be if you just don't extend the one that we have.
Yeah, I know there's, there's some state laws that are tied into, to this. There's some federal laws that tie into us holding ourselves accountable through this measure. So there's some things we still have to do.
Yeah.
But I hear you.
With no testing, I just don't, you know, it's just- Yeah, but that's not up to us, unfortunately.
Yeah, but that's not up to us, unfortunately.
Nope, no.
So what, what they will do, just FYI for testing, they're just going to act like this spring never happened. For, for students who did complete testing, any test, just the math or just the English or just the science, if there's any students that did complete testing, they will still receive a score report over the summer, in the early fall. There will be no school scores, there will be no district scores. So as far as the dashboard goes, they're just going to act like this year never happened. So when they, assuming everything goes fine, next school year, we do all our testing, they're going to compare those results to the results from two thousand and nineteen and just measure that growth, knowing that there was a whole extra year in between. They're going to, they're still going to measure status and change based on the group two years prior.
They're doing the same thing with the LCAP. They canceled it, but all the kids who took it will be, will get, will find out if they've been reclassified as fluent.
So we are still, we are still doing initial LCAP testing. All the summative got paused.
Yes.
And we're anticipating them, it sounds like they're going to just extend the window into the fall.
How can you do it still? LCAP testing?
Oh, it's all online, it's all online and individual phone calls.
Oh, God. Well, I know, I know it's online, but God, that sounds like a headache. Sorry. I just do summative.
So that's, that's the update?
Okay. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion item is second reading of the Distance Learning Grades Evaluation of Student Achievement, and I have some comments. I have a problem. It says, "Students will need to demonstrate their understanding of essential standards through class assignments and assessments." But what if, just if I were in this boat and I, I would not be able to do any of my math from distance learning? I, I don't understand if students are struggling with understanding something and they don't have their peers, and they don't really have a lot of access to, well, they probably have some access to their teacher. If they're struggling with understanding, why are we going to penalize them?
So can you, can you say a little more, what, how are we penalizing them?
Well, it says, "Students will need to demonstrate their understanding of essential standards through class assignments and assessments. Class assignments will be graded on a credit, no credit basis. Assessments may be graded using the point system to better measure student performance. But if students are not understanding the work, why are we going to penalize them with a no credit because they just don't get it? And there's nobody to help them?"
So, the, the way we, the way we developed with this, with our, with our teacher leadership group was if students are participating, if they're trying, if they're turning in work at least to a satisfactory level, you know, we just don't want them filling in random answers to get credit. So, only, only assessments, and this isn't, you don't have to do this, but we did want teachers to be able to, you know, when they assess kids, to actually see where they were. But all classwork is credit, no credit. So if they're trying, even if they don't know at all, if they're trying, they're going to get credit for having done the assignment.
And all teachers are on board with that and will follow that?
That's a great question.
You know, I, I appreciated all the comments we got on this topic, but I want, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that teachers have always had the responsibility to assess student performance and can lower and upper grades based upon how they see students performing. When I first read this proposed policy, I saw it as a constraint on the, on that ability. It is actually working to the students' favor to reduce the opportunities for reducing grades through, because of the conditions of educational delivery right now. So I, I was actually really happy to see this proposal originally. I, I think it's generous, and, but I do recognize the, the concerns that people have raised and what Ellen just brought up. You know, what, what PD do we have with teachers to make sure that we're all in the same boat about how we're going to use this constrained authority in ways that, you know, give the most latitude and leniency to a student in this strange condition?
So let me, let me add, after, after our last board meeting, when, when the board asked us to go back and look at this and, and consider late work and how to, how to incorporate that, the state then came out with their guidance on grading after, after we had done ours. And we've reiterated and communicated what the state is saying to our, to our staff, which, which is, we need to keep in mind, a lot of the things that were mentioned in public comment, a lot of the things that the Thai folks mentioned as well in their petition, there are issues of equity, there are going to be issues of access. You know, it's not a perfect learning environment at home. We've got many parents who are also teachers, who are trying to teach and help the kids. There are some homes where one or two parents is working because they're an essential employee and they're not there to help. So, we've, we've reiterated to staff what the state, state has said, and we need to hold students harmless, we need to do no harm, we need to be sensitive, while still understanding that, you know, we want there to be some motivation for students to work, to try their best. We've asked teachers to be, you know, reasonable, consider all these things. We, we've, the policy doesn't say, sorry, the AR doesn't say they have to lower a grade, but it does say they could. If, if in a case where we've determined, the teachers determined, you know, we've been reaching out, it's not an issue of access. It, it may be one of those other things, but the idea is to, to fully look at the scenario, student by student, before even considering lowering a grade. And I will say, the only district that I know of that has a policy for distance learning of no Fs at all is LA Unified. Most districts in the Bay Area are doing credit, no credit for end-of-year grades. So not just assignments, but end-of-year grades. So, there are students who can and will, in some Bay Area districts, end the year with a lower grade because they may receive a no-credit grade, which would be the equivalent of less than a D or an F. So most of the, most of the districts in Bay Area are doing credit, no credit, and there is still an opportunity where a student could end the year in a lower status. You know, we don't want to totally take away the motivation to do the work. If work were just optional, you know, we might be furthering or playing into the, the achievement gap because some kids would do the work.
Well, I'm just saying, some kids would not do the work. I'm just concerned about kids that are struggling, trying to do the work, and they just don't get it. And so they may, I don't even know, you know, my grand.
So I think you're.
What you touched on my concern was, like, is, if we do, if we don't grade, like, are we going to be widening the achievement gap? Because let's say, you know, I'm little Joanna Matthews and I don't understand, I don't understand math, so I'm just not going to do it. Like, I, I just, or I don't go to my teacher because I know I'm going to be held, like, completely harmless or completely, there's like no accountability, I guess. I don't want to take away accountability because again, that can widen.
I don't either.
Yep. So I know we just heard a presentation about intervention. So I guess, so another question I have is what types of interventions are teachers doing right now to make sure that kids who are not performing well in their assessments are actually getting the help that they need?
So my understanding is that school sites are ident, are identifying kids by name, by need, and making those contacts. You know, we've particularly concerned about, obviously, access students that, accessibility issues, or students we haven't even been able to get a hold of. There's a very small pocket of students that are that, that are in that, that boat, or students that teachers have issues with related to some red flag that's come up in the last couple of weeks of the starting, starting the distance learning. We started out this, 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 this process under really two basic theories. One was that, that we were locking grades, we were locking grades at spring break, not including, notwithstanding those students that still might have had outstanding work that they still wanted to turn in for credit. That was one thing. And that if a student was doing just some element of just participating, I'm not talking, this concept of content mastery, I, I don't know where that, that comes from, but just if they were participating and involved in their, in, in the virtual learning process, that their grade could not go down, that that grade was guaranteed to at least stay there. But there are students that had the potential of raising their grade because we know a lot of students, these are, that were, you know, they're fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old students. And some of them wait, believe it or not, until April or May to kick it into gear to raise their grades. And so, if you, if you lock, if you lock that grade, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of communities that are unhappy with, with credit, no credit because they feel like their kid had a, a grade. And now they're, that A grade is turning to credit, no credit. So there's, it, it's, it's, you're kind of, I don't know, damned if you do, damned if you don't. It's, there's no perfect scenario. However, you know, we've been, we too are, and, you know, the Federation are very concerned about those, those kids that might fall through the cracks, that they might not have. And, you know, we're, we, we believe that those situations will, are going to get resolved through working with individually, family by family. I don't know if you can write policy around that individual situation. I mean, you could conceivably do something around those unique situations to create a waiver type of process. But, you know, we wanted to honor this process of, of the district going out, having, because this is so at the core of teaching, that it had to be something that we worked on with the Federation. And so, it's not perfect by any means. I just don't know what, I don't know what, what, what the best answer at this point. I think that.
So let me, let me just add.
I was going to add.
Yeah, jump in.
Just, so just to clarify, sorry, Cliff, and/or Gary, if you could answer. So what, did you work on this grading policy with the Federation? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I had, I had several Zoom meetings with PFT leadership, and we just started from zero, just trying to look at what some districts were doing out there. You know, we didn't necessarily use the words "do no harm", but when the, when the state came out their guidance, it pretty much matched what we were, what we were thinking. What, how ours is different? So us in Santa Rosa ended up kind of doing the same thing, but we didn't know about what they were doing. We just ended up doing the same thing. We're, we're both doing credit, no credit for work, but giving letter grades at the end. The state then came out and said, "Hey, you can give credit, no credit as a final grade", which was something we hadn't, you know, hadn't, hadn't thought about. But we've gone back and forth a few times. We created the first iteration and then had to come back and go, "Okay, what about, you know, what about this scenario? What would we do in this case?" Just so, just so folks know, our board policy on grading does reference that teachers have the final say in the grade, and it, you know, quotes the ed code. But the district, the superintendent or designee determines the parameters. So the AR is the parameters with which teachers have to abide when assigning whatever grade they want. This temporary AR would supersede the current AR, which, you know, to a degree restricts somewhat what teachers could do before in the AR. And the board policy also says that it's up to the principals to ensure that their teachers are complying with, you know, with these guidelines. So, there, there definitely are many, many reasonable, well-meaning teachers who are doing their best and don't want to unnecessarily penalize any student. There are others who just naturally, you know, are used to grading a certain way. And, you know, even though this was a PFT district, you know, co-developed thing, there are some folks that are, you know, maybe not warming up to this. And we're going to have to, you know, kind of seek those issues out and deal with those individually. But, you know, what, what we clearly don't want to do is, you know, we don't want to put any student in a worse position at the end, at the end of the year. We are working with, with sites and teachers, students by name, by need. We know who hasn't checked in at all in any of the online check-ins. We know who doesn't have access, we know down to the kid, and we're handling that right now. It's, it's less than fifty for the entire district that still needs some type of help. Some are using a phone hotspot, but they're just tearing through their data plan. Some don't have any access at all, some are still doing packets, so we're working on, on that as well. I know it's, it's not a, not a perfect system, and it's, I'm kind of interested to see as each district puts out their actual plan, where they fall in line. But I, you know, I think we're going to have to watch this closely as we get towards the end. I'd, I'd be interested to see just, you know, just, if any, how many students actually end up with a, with a lower grade. I, I would assume right now, it's going to be rare, few and far between. But it's, it is still an option.
So, didn't the grading period end? Oh, sorry. Well, I just have a question. If a kid, like you just said, some kids don't kick it into gear till after spring break. They're like, "Oh, my God." So if a kid was failing at the time of this shelter-in-place, distance-learning thing, and they, they do what they're supposed to do, they participate, will they be able to raise their grade?
Yes.
Okay, that was.
Yes.
That, that's really, that's pretty clear. So, grading ends today, the grading period?
Yeah, there's.
The second grading period ends today. I think so. Will, 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 will there be, can you kind of maybe bring in evaluation of how that went? From, you know, is there a survey, maybe you could go out for teachers or, I don't know, kind of look at it and see how, if kids were really getting dinged, you know, whether there was an, as, as they pointed out, you know, what, was it inequitable? Does it seem like, you know, the, the distribution of grades and the way that get grades are given may not, may have still had some equity issues with it?
Yeah, we, yeah, we. We can look into surveying teachers. So the guidance we gave for this marking period, because, because most of it was prior to spring break, and some of it was the start of distance learning. And if you notice in our AR, we technically didn't start grading until after April fifth, but we started distance learning a week before that. So we kind of gave a little leeway, "Let's get started, let's check in, let's, let's deal with things." So we told teachers, "You can either give the grade that they started spring break with, plus any makeup work that they accepted. If you want to draw the line and stand there, then do that. If you want to give as accurate a grade as possible up until today, it's a hybrid of pre-spring break and the start of distance learning, go ahead. But, you know, you need to make sure you communicate to your parents, what, what is this grade? Is this grade a hybrid? Is this grade just pre-spring break? Because the next one's going to be all distance learning, this last marking period." So, the guidance was, "Give an accurate, as a, you know, as accurate a grade as you can possibly give right now." So we, we can survey it and see, like, what did you do? Did you do a hybrid? Did you stick with the third grade, the third grading period?
Students and parents understand.
Before spring break.
But I, I think one of the challenges is that it, grades, grades go up and down all year long. And we, 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 we've all been in situations where, for, for whatever reason, situations occurred in a student's life and, and grades tanked in that last six weeks. We, most of us, if we've taught, we have, we've had that student that was a head-scratcher. This is really no different in the sense of, there are reasons why things go up and down. I think what we're trying to figure out I think what we're trying to figure out is, is, are, are those reasons related to something that we have done? Related to not giving them the accessible, the accessibility to their, their, their work product? Or have we not, you know, appropriately engaged them? Have we not made those communication contacts? And if there's, I think there's a, a finite list of things that we're trying to work through to, and we'd like to try to work with the teachers on. I'm not sure how to write policy on that, because the, the only way to write policy around that is to give the superintendent or designee a heck of a lot of control to just make unilateral grade changes, which the board could do. I'm just not sure that's a great process.
I don't think that's a-
To say, to say, you know, that you can, there's a possibility that there's situations where, where, I mean, there could be, you could, you know, we could look at a waiver type of a situation, where we could give a type of a waiver, where this is all still new to everyone. I think what's, what's, what is absolutely clear across the board is nobody wants to do any undue harm on some kids that have gone through a lot of trauma already in their life, let alone, and you know, our kids have already been through enough emergencies, and this is just another one. I don't think we're trying to do that, but we're also trying to recognize that, that this is a profession, and this is, and, and this is their, this is their, one of the most important things that they can do, and we, we need them to participate. And participation is important right now-
Yes.
-in their academics. They don't have to be perfect. They don't even have to be so-so. They just have to, to give a, give a shot and participate. So it's a balance.
I just want to share, you know, I, I mean, I appreciate where, you know, Tide and the 333 people who've signed the petition are coming from. They've identified some of the same things we've already communicated to teachers, but they actually have a few that we haven't, which I do want to share with teachers so that they understand it's not just an access issue. You know, it is a learning environment issue. It is a support issue.
Right.
There's probably more things that are, that could be added to this list.
Capital issue. In the, the literature calls it level one, level two digital divide, level one is the physicals, access is the quiet space, level two is can I navigate? Do I have friends that I can connect with? Do I have parents that are helping? All those things. Yeah.
Good. Okay. Well, so you're going to be talking with, sharing that with, with teachers that this, these are issues that may come up, and how do you deal with that?
Yeah, and we got, we got some feedback from, we're going to be, be rolling out a little bit more on the frequently asked questions with folks. We got some feedback from some teachers. They felt that, that was pretty beneficial.
Okay.
We want to do some additional work regarding to the, the details of it. This is just very, very different for folks. This is very different when they're used to an Ares grade book. And I, and honestly, I think that by and large, this is really more of a secondary issue than an elementary issue.
I agree.
As, and at an elementary issue, it's, it's, it's apples and oranges. I've taught both, and you can't compare the two. I don't think this is really as, just as we've been able to identify what uniqueness there is in every single classroom with, with family issues, and, and teachers are really much more on that at elementary, because they've got a, a manageable number. It's, it's a little bit more problematic when you have 150 kids in your caseload. We know that. But this is a conversation that we've had every week, twice a week with our principals, and they really, really are, are playing the role of the lead advocate for these students. Should we get a couple of weeks down the road and we're not making the kind of progress? Then maybe we, we have to revisit and tweak some of this before we get to that final, final grade. I mean, with, this is, I'm, I'm, nothing is set in stone. But yeah, I think that there, the concern that's out there is a very legitimate concern. We are concerned as well. And we want to, but we want to make sure that we do it right for, for our students as best we can.
Remind me, AR does not require a board approval, right?
So I just want to add one more thing. So we're, Ares came out with some, some tools that they've added to their, their grade book and their system for teachers and distance learning to be able to adequately account for what's going on. So we're going to be sharing that out with teachers. It just came out yesterday. Up until now, we've had folks, there's like several ways you can make the system kind of do what we want to do with credit, no credit. But I'll, I'll give an example of, of a, of a do no harm that backfired. So you know, there, there's a situation where we're doing no, we're doing credit, no credit for the assignments, yet we're grading assessments. There was a student who had an A+, took an assessment, got a 98. But since the credit, no credit was worth zero, as far as the weighting, that 98 brought the A+ down to an A, because it was weighted heavier. So like stuff like that, we're going to have to work out, because, you know, clearly, you know, we, we need to make Ares work for us and not against us. So we're going to be sharing those tools with staff.
And those grades on the grading period are going in as letter grades?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
So parents will be able to access Ares tomorrow and see their kids' grades?
Yeah, I believe it's-
I think it's probably-
Close yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's Friday. Take a couple of days to verify and to make sure there's no gaps or holes or anything like that.
So Friday?
Friday. And we did, and we did add some comments in Ares to notify parents, you know, if there's little or no distance learning work being submitted or completed, if they are doing well. So we added a couple of extra codes just for, just for learning.
Good. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, CSI funding and planning for 2020, 2021?
All right, I waited two and a half hours for this, and now I just- I'm talking too much. Okay, this will be quick. So going forward, we have two schools that are going to be identified for CSI for next year. So San Antonio continues to be identified, as well as, you know, Carpe Diem. I think I said Carpe was off earlier. I was wrong. Sonoma's off, Carpe's still identified. So we'll be working on continuing our, our improvement science work with those groups. We were funded additional monies for next year, and we confirmed with the state there, the feds are not pulling back any of that money, neither is the state. So that's good news. We can hold on to that. No schools will be identified next year, because there's no data. So this tag, this tag will stick for, for two years until the next, you know, the next go-through. But you know, as, as you saw earlier, the improvement science work that the TOSAs did, you know, was great. It was, it was a learning curve for us. We've never, we've never done improvement science work like this, or we truly try to analyze, you know, issues and try to get down to the root of what's going on and then try to systematically address it. We're used to getting a grant, applying a Band-Aid, grant goes away. Right? We lose all the support. So, so what we're trying to do is build in some systematic changes, so that once, the, one, you know, we can get San Antonio out of this CSI status, which they may due to their projected graduation rate, but also, you know, build it so that we're not reliant upon grant money to support our work. So just going forward next year, the, we've already asked the principals to engage their sites, obviously through Zoom and through other, you know, telecommunications methods to talk about what, what are some things they might want to do with their portion of the funds as far as support. It looks like San Antonio has an interest in continuing some of the counseling support and the career support. And they, they flew a position today. They're going to do a, kind of a part-time site, TOSA, to do some of the work. We're, we're looking right now at what, what's the district level of support going to be? And it, it may not be the same thing we did this last year with our three TOSAs. You know, they did great work, but three people take up a, a large chunk of the grant money. So we want to, we want to, you know, use less the district level, push more out to the sites. So we're, we're working right now on developing what that's going to look like as far as district support. But just want to give you the good news, we, we still have funding. It's not going to be going away, and we can continue to support those schools.
Good. Good.
Okay, Rise Academy.
Yeah, we're, just an update that we're, we're, we're working through steps with, with CDE on procedurally, how to go about closing an alternative, the alternative school of choice designation. And that process, we'll just keep bringing back to the board once, once we get a, we get a, for a clearer detail on it, on, on. Last time it was just merely a paperwork thing that we did, changing, doing a name change and then changing out to, changing it from the former program to an alternative school of choice program. So it, because of the nature of the size and the, the lack of complexity on it, it's, it's a fairly simple process, we believe, but we'll, we'll update you as we go through this process. We've been working with the, with the site principals on, because it's, we don't really have students that, we have one or two students that would, we, we would redirect back to their homeschool, but you know, that population has always come from the school. So how do we do some more proactive things at the school site? Keep the students with their, with their peer, peer-appropriate students and, and try to give them some additional services, because a lot of the issues are not academic by nature. A lot of them are related to other issues that are going on in their, in their lives. And so what kind of extra support can we give them, such as mental health support? That'll be really big, because it's, it's very clear that when, when students are coming that, yes, there's some academic issues, but there's a lot of other social, emotional issues that are, that are equally as, as important, that are driving where they, where they are, at least with their, their performance.
And then graduation, 2020?
So, I mean, graduation, and we're, we're, I mean, we're still, as a, as a district, intending on, on, well, we're going to graduate the students. We know that. At least our seniors. And we, we, we want to appropriately recognize those students in a graduation ceremony. And so as of now, we're operating under the concept of postponement. I know people want dates. I don't know how we, we, we will probably at some point set a aspirational date to do something, but we need just a little bit more information to get a sense of, I don't want to start sending an aspirational date and then changing that aspirational date to another date. I think we need a, we, from, from all of the, the weekly and numerous meetings with Department of Health, who are in constant contact with the governor, it's really unknown right now. We are, we are, we are in a really unknown situation. And Sonoma County Department of Health calls the shots on this.
Yeah.
So it's not, not the school district, certainly not Superintendent Petaluma. So we're, we're, we're operating under the postponement. The actual ceremonies themselves have always been run and coordinated by the school sites. As you are well aware, they have their own uniqueness to their ceremonies. And so they're working with their staffs, but they're now also now working together on, well, what can we do in the meantime? If we're operating under the concept of postponing a traditional graduation ceremony, what can we do between now and the true graduation time to recognize these students? Have a lot of great ideas that people have come up with, that they're, they're kind of bouncing around. And they're meeting, I Cliff's meeting with them every week to look at that particular issue. They have a meeting set up. Cliff, when is your next meeting? Is it Thursday with the, with the principals? Yeah.
Yeah.
Have a Thursday meeting, but you know, they're, they're, some of them require coordination with city agencies. And some of them on the surface sound like such a great idea until you actually flesh it out, like the, the concept of a, of a car parade of graduates, sounds like a great idea, but what, what's the whole idea behind a parade? People line the streets.
Right.
So that's not necessarily going to be, going to be approved. If you're having, if you're putting people in a situation where they're, they're lining the streets to wave at graduates, as great as that would be. You know, what, I know that the, their yearbook advisors, I think it's Jostens for Petaluma and, and Casa Grande have reached out. They have some ideas on things to do. I know they're reaching out to their student councils. I know they, they, they sent out a brief survey. I know across the board, our parents want to see a, a, a ceremony, and they're in favor of postponement, if that means that they're going to get their ceremony. So as we are, as it stands right now, all we can really say right now is that we're pushing towards a ceremony. And that's, we, I, we can't give any more information than that. We're thinking maybe August, you know, maybe August aspirationally. But no matter what date we set to do that, we're going to have people that can't make it. We're going to have upset families, and there might have to be a, a hybrid type of a model. I don't know. But also, the challenge that we're going to have is these, these operations have always been run by the school site. It's going to be very difficult once school starts for a school to coordinate and run one of these. So we'll, we will be relying on, on, on probably families. We probably will be relying on graduate parents to help us in that part, that process, because the system is designed to, where there is time at the end of the school year for them, they've allocated time to be able to prep for that ceremony. They have not allocated, nor will they be able to allocate time during the, one of the busiest times of the year, which is the startup of school.
Yeah.
And so, so we're trying to be realistic about things and really be thoughtful before we point, before we put a date out there.
Right. And kids are going to be going to college.
Yeah.
I mean, not, certainly not all of them, but-
But some of them are going to be leave. And what about some of the questions that Phoebe brought up, like prom and deposits?
We talked about that today. They're working on their, their, with their vendors. I think they're going to be able to get their, either money back or some type of a credit. But I mean, that's, that's a process that, those are monies that are, that are, that are collected by student government and student council, that student council money. Those students need to be involved in that with the district.
Our issue, is it?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a student, it's a student government, student council issue. But the school sites are stepping in, in their, in that role with a student advisor and trying to, to mitigate that and figure out. But those dollars, you know, there's, there's still questions on, on, on. Each school site feels confident that they're going to be able to get their money in some way, shape or form. Unlike, unlike other school, just, school districts that, I won't name the facility, maybe someday I will if they, if they hold out, but there's some, some named facilities that have held out and said they, they are not reimbursing students for their-
Horrible.
For their, their, their deposits. So-
Foundation start with the T.
What's that?
So Gary, I, I think all of us have been hearing from parents, particularly parents of seniors, you know, who have really interesting ideas about alternative ways of doing a ceremony. Should, what I'm hearing from you is they need to be contacting their site.
They need to contact the principal.
The principal.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we, we did have the sites all send out a survey to senior parents, like, I don't know, Friday, for this very reason. You know, parents are anxious, they've got ideas and lack, you know, in, in absence of any communication, people are just spinning. So we said, you know, there's probably some great ideas out there. Engage your folks, send out a survey. So I know both comprehensives, and then they shared the survey they developed with the alt dead site, so I know they're going out to senior parents right now.
I think we're really, yeah, I mean, I think-
What that survey was? Because I, I didn't know what the survey was. So thank, thank you for clarifying that. I hadn't heard about that.
We're, we're, we're trying to honor what the, you know, this is a, you know, the, the longstanding tradition of the ceremony. And quite, part of the reason why I think the ceremony is a special one is more than just that it's a gra, that it's graduation. But the ceremony is the school ceremony. They own it. Those students own it. They develop it. They create it. The board shows up and the superintendent and cabinet, we're just a, a, a bit role player in that ceremony. We don't, we don't, it's not our ceremony. It's their ceremony. And so, so we can have some sense of, and help coordinate and try to knock down some obstacles and help them with some dates, dates that are going to work. But the ceremony itself.
It's up to the sites.
That's got to come from them. Otherwise it no longer becomes their graduation ceremony. And we don't want to take that away from, and I don't want to assume that just because students are going, going to school, that they, they're not going to come back. I don't want to assume any of that stuff, you know? All we can do is try to do right in a really bad situation. And so we're going to, we're going to, our, our goal is, and, and maybe it's not, maybe it's, maybe it's November. I don't know. But we're planning to try to do some kind of, some kind of a, of a recognition, a face-to-face recognition with our, with our students.
So I was, I was just informed, we've had 650 parents respond in English already and 189 in Spanish to the survey of senior parents. So that's a good start.
That's really good. Is all this stuff going out in Spanish and English? Yeah. Okay. Just double checking.
Some of the preliminary data that Gateway to College, Casa Grande and Petaluma High shared with us was that there's a strong interest in the postponement for an actual ceremony.
Okay. Well, we'll be there whenever they do it. Okay, future business.
I wanted to raise one issue. I was really piqued by Sandra's comment during comment session about a planning committee of some sort. I know we have a planning process with its calendar and, and there is a process in place. But I do appreciate that Sandra is, you know, thinking about, thinking ahead about how do we get ahead on cuts? If we see a shrinking budget in the future, which I think most of us do see that. And so I, I wasn't around when, in the circumstance that Sandra was describing with this planning budget. And so I, I guess my question that I want us to address is within the construct of the current budgeting process, how do we make decisions about cuts when we see big ones on the horizon? And, and how do we, how do we share governance in that way with our key stakeholders?
Which I think is vital. I agree with you.
Good.
I also would like, and I don't know if May is when it's going to happen, but I was very intrigued by the whole watershed classroom program and the environmental literacy. And I'd like to, I don't know, explore that more as far as seeing it go beyond just a pilot program and seeing it in the schools.
They were asking for us
We can send you some information.
Yeah, to participate in the pilot, to collaborate with them in developing, you know, across the board.
Yeah.
And I, I
I think environmental literacy is vital.
Yeah.
Vital, especially with the way the climate is right now.
Yeah.
And so I just
They do it, they did a great job. I mean, it was, yeah. We have some, we have some really phenomenal teachers that, that have a real passion in, in this and do some really great project-based learning.
So I would just like to bring that back and maybe see if we, about extending it. Any other?
I was just wondering if, if there's been conversations about what happens? I mean, are we still on track? I know that you can't probably answer this. But are there conversations about what hap, if we're still on track to open on, isn't it August 12th? For school?
Still, still on track.
Okay. Because I, that's the only question I ever get asked.
Yep. We may be coming back, we may be coming back in, in the, we will be coming back actually in mid-May if we're in the same situation. And we'll be doing a little bit of work around whether we should, we're going to do some surveying of our, of our year-round parents. We, we may come with a recommendation to postpone the start of year round to the same time as the traditional calendar. But that's really speculative right now. But we would have to make that decision. We, we know, because we've been doing the planning, we would have to make that decision by the first meeting in June.
Okay.
Board meeting in June, and that would give people over a month. But there's a lot of reasons why that would make sense and there's a lot of reasons why we should wait.
Well, I think by, by June, we should have more, we should know.
Yeah. We have a count, we have a calendar committee too, and we want to, we would want to chat with them as well. So get all that, get all the feedback from everyone.
Okay. Done, but if we could have, if there's any type of data we can see about how many kids have declined.
Yeah.
Distance learning, then also what type of interventions counselors and principals and system principals have done and teachers as well.
What we'll do is what we could do, I believe, is, is we'll bring some information back. We probably can do an analysis of grade, grade declines from last year. From fourth to fifth to grade declines. So we at least can get some kind of empirical and we, you know, I mean, the goal would be with, with any of those declines, we should be looking at them and contacting kids by name, by need to make sure that we're not, it's not an issue of, of will. Because it's not a skill issue anymore. It shouldn't be. It's, and if, if the issue there's, they really, they just can't because of a lot of other circumstances that are going on. And I think we got to be, we've got to be really cognizant of that.
Yes.
Try to, try to pivot accordingly.
Yeah, we, we can definitely do that analysis. But just, just to clarify, so our, our temporary AR governs the end of year grade. So technically this progress report, teachers still have some latitude, some leeway. Because this is their last progress report, right? To say, like, student needs to do more, they're in danger of failing if they don't produce more. So we, we can look at it, but we will have to understand there may be some here that are still using that, you know, to kind of call attention to some underperformance. While at the end of the year, following the parameters, the new temporary era, they may not end up lowering that grade. But we, we could definitely analyze it.
Yeah, but it's a good indication for them, for the teachers to just kind of make the parents and the kids aware. That maybe they have to up their game or maybe there is an intervention that needs to happen. You know? Not just that slide, I guess.
So Ellen, well, we will have to adjourn for a few minutes to close session at the, at the, at the conclusion. We will not be reporting anything out. So we just needed to finish. We just needed to finish, we need to finish the, we finished the conversation.
Okay.
That.
I am adjourning this meeting.
Okay. And I'll get you, you're going to get a invite from me in about two minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.